Commissioners, this meeting is being streamed live on the county's website. The meeting is also...
Testing, testing.
Commissioners, this meeting is being streamed live on the county's website. The meeting is also being made available through Zoom webinar for members of the public who wish to provide comments during the citizen question and comment period later in your agenda. Anyone?
Testing, testing. One, two, three. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Commissioners, this meeting is being streamed live on the county's website. The meeting is also being made available through Zoom webinar for members of the public who wish to provide comments during the citizen question and comment period later in your agenda.
Good day, David.
It does feel warmer in here than I thought.
Seventy-three degrees.
Yeah, it's warmer than that, which is shocking typically.
You just put it in at sixty-four degrees. This is what it normally is.
It's really balmy in here today then.
Well, this feels good compared to what?
We'll be fine if we don't get a bunch of people in chambers, but...
In which case they need... well, it should adjust, but I don't know how this... I don't know if it's working or just...
Yeah.
We got lucky.
I have no clue.
Last week it was still sixty-four when I come in.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. Monday, yesterday I come in. Something's not right here. The thermostat shows the temperature and it says six... it's normally sixty-four or sixty-five, now it's showing seventy-two.
Who knows?
It's a step in the wrong direction maybe.
Right, well, I guess.
I don't know, meat locker is not really my favorite temperature.
Keeps me awake. I prefer the meat locker.
The only thing about it, I don't like to worry about refrigerator so I can eat stuff out. Doesn't get too warm.
Right.
I haven't heard anything from it from the facility about it, so it goes back and forth between what it said as and what's actually...
Yeah, it said seventy-two, so what is it?
So it's seventy?
Seventy degrees, yeah.
Seventy?
Seventy, seventy point one.
Oh, yeah. That's the action. I think that...
I dropped it a little bit, but we'll see what happens. Probably nothing.
Might hate it by the way you're working it. I was told they were just dummy, not telling me, they weren't active yet. Put them in, it could be a while. I never heard that it's reactivated except all of a sudden it come in.
Well, the guy from Honeywell was in our office for a couple of hours programming all of ours, but it also depends on like in our office, we don't have heat in certain areas.
I don't have heat here.
So, it's fine, we'll see what happens.
Well, we're working. Yeah, I might see it if I'm working the fire retarder. I've been hearing about this room, fixing the air conditioning in this room here on this floor, mostly this room, for probably ten years.
Oh, yeah, I believe it.
Maybe more.
Yeah, I mean, they've been talking about the air conditioning for years, but...
I only have one speed unit.
You only have one?
Off, off, so either freezing or burning up.
Right, yeah. Hopefully this new AC system will fix the issues, but I guess it's always a crapshoot around here.
Takes a while to fix it. A while to look out to.
For sure.
We'll see how this goes.
We'll see.
Morning, David.
Hey, good morning.
This is the Lake County Board of County Commissioners regular meeting on February
with us this morning, and we do have an agenda item pertaining to the SOE. So I want to just go ahead and recognize that I'd like to pull that off of consent so that we can have Senator Hayes. We called him due to his service in the state senate for several years, many years. So we'll take that off of consent, and then any other items on consent we'll address once we get there. Okay, employees-
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 11th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Meeting here in Lake County. We are going to open our meeting with a prayer, and I see that Pastor Tony McCoy just made it in. I know he was working his way up here from South Lake, from Groveland. He is the pastor of Hope International Church, and we appreciate him being here today to give our invocation, and then we'll remain standing and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Glad I made it. Good morning, county commissioners and all those who are in attendance today. I always consider it an honor and a privilege to stand before you whenever asked upon to be here. Before I pray, I would like to share with each of you the theme that we have at Hope International Church. Now, I won't preach, I promise. But what I just want to share with you, our theme is genuine love. And I've been sharing with the congregation that love is more than a feeling. Love is an action word. In other words, your actions point to what you really love. Now, me knowing all of you, and it's evident that you guys love Lake County because of the way that you serve with your gifts, your talents, and your expertise. I want to just tell you, as we are in 2025, that the road of love will not always be easy or stress-free, but it will be rewarding. I want to thank each of you for accepting the love call in serving Lake County. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for these men and women that have accepted the call to honor you by serving our communities and the citizens of Lake County. We thank you that when you call them, you also equip them to be ready for whatever tasks that lay ahead of them on this agenda today and this entire year. May each of them stay anchored in you, stay focused, and may they stay present. And finally, may they position Lake County for positive transformation that will improve the quality of life, foster economic growth, and continue to bring our community together as one. I pray that you will bless them today and every day, along with their supportive staff and volunteers, and may we always be reminded that we have the total victory in you through Jesus Christ. It is in Jesus' name that we access, and we all say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
And truly appreciate the message. All right, before we move along with the meeting, we will have our virtual meeting instructions, because all of our meetings are live streamed, and we have the opportunity through Zoom to allow participation by the public if they're not here in person. So I'll turn it over to Eric Ross in IT.
Commissioners, this meeting is being streamed live on the county's website. The meeting is also being made available through Zoom webinar for members of the public who wish to provide comments during the citizen question and comment period later in your agenda. Anyone watching through the live stream who wishes to participate in the meeting can follow the directions broadcast now through the stream. During the citizen question and comment section, anyone who has joined the Zoom webinar using their phone can press star nine to virtually raise their hands. Anyone participating online can click the raise hand button to let us know you wish to speak. When it is time for public comment, the meeting facilitator will read the person's name or phone number, and will then unmute the appropriate line, and the speaker will be asked to provide comments. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. After three minutes, an alarm will sound, letting them know their time is up. We have previously notified the public that comments could be emailed up through 5:00 PM yesterday, and those comments were shared with the board prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to provide written comments during the meeting can visit lakecountyfl.gov/commissionmeeting. That's lakecountyfl.gov/commissionmeeting. Any written comments submitted during the meeting will be shared with each board member following the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on then to agenda updates. Jennifer, do we have any changes?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair. First, we added tab 24 to the agenda as an addendum. It is going to be added as a regular agenda item. And secondly, I would like to discuss the coordination. We do have a closed session today, as well as a CRA meeting. So I ask that we recess this board briefly for about five minutes or so, and we can set up for the closed session immediately following this meeting. We'll have the closed session, and then we will come back in and adjourn the regular board meeting after the closed session has completed. And then finally, we would open it up as this board sitting as the CRA board.
All right. Also, I want to recognize that we have Supervisor of Elections, Alan Hayes, with us this morning, and we do have an agenda item pertaining to the SOE. So I want to just go ahead and recognize that I'd like to pull that off of consent so that we can have Mr. Senator Hayes, we called him due to his service in the state senate for several years, many years. So we'll take that off of consent, and then any other items on consent, we'll address once we get there. Okay, Employee Service Awards. Janine Nelson.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Janine Nelson with the Office of Human Resources and Risk Management. This morning, you're recognizing those employees who have reached significant milestones in their careers with Lake County, including even an employee who was celebrating their 25th year anniversary with the county. So we're going to start with five years, and after each group is mentioned, then we'll have that group stand, and we'll give them a round of applause. Starting with five years, we have Don Coyle. Don began her career with Lake County on the 6th of January 2020. She's an Office Associate Five with the Office of Visit Lake Tourism. And also with five years, we have Jeff Earhart. He began his career with Lake County also on January the 6th, 2020. He's our Engineering Director with the Office of Public Works. Would you both stand, please, so we can recognize you? Going on to 10 years. Jeremy Cooper. Jeremy began his career with Lake County on the 5th of January 2015. He's a Senior CAD Technician with the Office of Public Works. Justin Holmes began his career also on January the 5th, 2015. He's a firefighter EMT with Fire Rescue. Justin Hansberger began his career with Lake County, January 20th, 2015. He's a Senior Building Inspector with the Office of Building Services. We also have Ava Laura, who began her career with Lake County on January the 5th, 2015. She's a Public Hearing Coordinator with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Dustin Rosenkranz began on January the 5th, 2015, Fire Lieutenant Paramedic with Office of Fire Rescue. And William Warburton, January the 5th, 2015. He is a firefighter paramedic, also with the Office of Fire Rescue. With our 10-year employees who are being recognized, please stand. I'm not sure he was able to attend, Christian Svensson, January the 28th, 2005. He's a Fire Lieutenant Paramedic with Fire Rescue, so let's give him a round of applause. Our 25-year employee being recognized is Matt Dorn. Matt began his career with Lake County on January the 3rd, 2000. He serves as a Trades Crew Leader with the Office of Facilities Managed Maintenance. Matt, you want to stand up so we can recognize you? Thank you. Congratulations to all those employees who have names I've called, and this concludes our presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks to everybody, and feel free, if you need to get onto wherever you need to go next, it's fine with us. Next on our agenda, we have minutes approval. I see we have our clerk with us today. Mr. Cooney?
I have two sets of minutes for your approval this morning.
All right. I see we've got November 21st and December 3rd of 2024. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on then to citizen question and comment period. We're now entering the public comment portion of the meeting, where the public can discuss items that are on today's agenda. With the exception of any zoning items, there will be an opportunity for public comment during those specific sections of the agenda, if we have any of those. Anyone who has joined our meeting via Zoom, using their phone may press star nine to virtually raise their hands. Anyone participating through Zoom online, please click the raise hand button to let us know that you wish to speak. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. After three minutes, an alarm will sound, letting you know that your time is up. So I've got some cards here, and I'm going to, I'm going to start at the top. Vincent Niemeyer?
Niemeyer.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Vincent. Hartwood Marsh and Hancock Road.
If I could just have this, oh, okay. Thank you. There you go. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Vincent Niemeyer. I'm from Clermont. Okay, I'm here to speak about a little situation and problem we have that I brought up over a year and a half ago, and nothing has been done. Okay, as you can see, we have an intersection between Hancock and Hartwood Marsh. Okay, Hancock northbound, you could see there's two lanes with no dedicated light signal. It does have a vehicle sensor in the ground, and the time on the light is 20 to 30 seconds. When we go the opposite way, going southbound, as you can see, we have one lane only, has a vehicle sensor, and it's only 20 to 30 seconds long. As you can see, there's no dedicated turn signal. Two of southbound lights are in sync. In other words, they work together. It's not one goes on and the other one goes off. Okay? Look, I don't come here to bring problems. I come here to bring solutions. All right? And look, it's very simple. I said this a year and a half ago. Nothing's got done. We had several accidents there, and I'm getting a little upset about this. Okay, here's the solution. We have one dedicated green traffic signal going northbound. Do it for 30 seconds. There's a sensor there. So you could do it for 20 seconds minimum, and do it for 30 seconds. Okay? When that stops, then have a dedicated signal going southbound. There's a sensor there, too. So all we got to do is have it for 20 to 30 seconds. All that's going to do is slow the traffic a little bit on Hartwood Marsh by 20 to 30 seconds, because we have sensors in the ground. The reason why I'm bringing this up to everybody, okay, it's like the Forrest Gump movie, stupid is what stupid does. Okay? We're going way till Schofield Road gets connected to Hancock. You're going to be going from four lanes into two lanes, and guess where that two lanes is going? It's going right into that major intersection. So once we connect Schofield Road to Hancock Road, that is going to be the most congested, and I mean the word congested, intersection that Lake County has ever seen. Okay? We're already backed up. You, all the Commissioners, know that how deep we're backed up on Schofield Road going out to 27. You made several adjustments already, and there's nothing you could fix. Could you imagine when that comes straight down Hancock? It's going to come along Hancock, it's going to go along Sister Living. When it crosses Hartwood Marsh, it's going to come across one school, a recreation area. It's going to be a disaster, a complete disaster. I'm just asking to get this fixed before we have a fatal accident. Once again, please, I don't want to fall on deaf ears, but if we could do something about this, especially in my districts, I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me have this time. God bless the council, the Commissioners, and I'll see everybody later. Thank you.
Brad, I know you're going to take a look at this, Jeff.
Oh.
All right. And then maybe next meeting, you'll give us an update on what can be done.
Again, ma'am? Because I meant, what, a year and a half ago, and nothing got done? I don't mean to be abrupt.
Well, you are being abrupt, and I would imagine.
But, you know, this is a problem we had for a year and a half, Commissioner.
And I would imagine there's probably a reason why it hasn't been changed, so.
All you have to do is get one guy to go there to change the signals. One guy, one gentleman, I'm not going to mention his name. He has to go open up the box, change the signals, and we won't have a problem. We have a school there. Imagination, that road is horrific. Here you go, ma'am.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've talked about this before, but Vinny, if you want to meet with the group here, but they can come back and present this, you know, if you want. I mean, that's the chair, up to the chair, but.
Jeff, you've got some feedback you can give us right now.
Jeff Earhart, Engineering Director. So we did look at the signal, trying to do the two dedicateds. We looked at the timing, the traffic is quite light going out of Hancock, because there's not much there now, and that the delays related to the school and on Hartwood Marsh would be more significant than doing that. As far as coming up from Hancock, we are looking at, it's going to be four lanes. When it actually gets up to Hartwood Marsh, when we build that, it'll be two lanes through Conserve coming up, and then it will be four lanes coming up to Hartwood Marsh, and that will be probably this year, that's going to start construction. And then, of course, the ultimate of widening of Hartwood Marsh itself is in 27, unless it gets advanced by DOT, if that helps. So we are looking at all of this, and we're, did I?
Clarification on the 27 date. It's fiscal year 27 for the state. It's actually July 2026, which begins the state fiscal year, so it's a year and a half from now.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate, you know, we're working with Clermont to see there's some way to speed that up even more. But I always like to point out, I thank the Commission, because we did make this the number one, literally the number one road issue about two to three years ago, and it was put on the list like in red at the NPO, and, you know, got the funding for it, but we had to play with those rules, play within the rules of DOT, and we're trying to, we got a meeting next week with Secretary Tyler to look to see if there's some way to speed it up even more. So I do appreciate that, and that'll come, and maybe we can provide an update after our meeting next week with Secretary Tyler to the board. So what we're doing, that and.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
So Jeff, I've got a question on these turn signals. Is it a solid green light, or is there like a turn arrow?
Right now, it's green in both directions, so you have to wait for an opening to come. What he's asking is that it be green in one way, and then turn red, and then green in the other way, so that you have dedicated.
And then it will turn like a flashing yellow once the time comes up, right?
There's no flashing yellow right now.
I know, but it could, it could happen, right?
It could be.
Okay. And you're looking into that, right? Okay, thanks.
But right now, you're, just so I understand, the explanation is that the traffic in the other direction would be held up, and that would have a greater impact on causing delays.
Correct. The traffic on Hartwood Marsh would be held up. If you had it 30 seconds both ways, and that's adding 30 seconds to everyone waiting on Hartwood Marsh. But we will look into it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's clear that when you say we'll look into it, if it's not done, it's because you've decided that it's going to cause more problems in the other direction. It's not that we'll look into it, and you never do.
Right. We've already looked into it. We will investigate it again and see if there's anything we can do.
If I could just say, yeah, is there a way, because at the end of the day, I hate when we hate, you know, we say we're going to look at something, and then it sort of fades away. Can you just do an email that says, listen, you know, here's the amount of cars here, here's the amount of cars here. If we don't, if we do this, it's going to cause this. So that way, if this gentleman or whoever comes and tries to rebut us, we can say, listen, we went to the engineer, we quantified it, and so therefore, where are your numbers at? Because I just want, you know, to be able to, the solidity of saying, you know, the engineers show you're going to cause more issues with this potential solution, and then if they push back, then, you know, I feel comfortable with our position. But if we could maybe just take a look at what it created on that adjacent road, thanks.
Yeah, I think that's important, and I mean, I think the last thing we want to have is a situation where a resident says, hey, I need you to do this, and we say, yeah, we're going to do it, and then nothing happens. Just so you know, it's, you know, they've been working on it. They've made a judgment call based on their expertise, that this was the right way to handle it for now, but you're going to go back, take a look at it, you're going to give us some data, and then we'll get an update on it. And you'll reach back out to Mr. Niemeyer about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Farmer Banks, Helfrum.
Farmer Banks Helfrick, Clay Road District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day, February 14th is coming up, which is Valentine's Day. Don't forget to put your spring garden in on Valentine's Day or thereabouts. Madam Commissioner, Commissioners, distinguished guests, over 100,000 years ago, our forefathers and our foremothers did something they had never done before. They trusted. It was the first tribe that was ever formed roughly back then. What happened? A kind gesture, possibly a decent proposal, maybe civility. These are the founding blocks of trust. When they came together, they formed a tribe. This tribe was strong enough to actually take down the woolly mammoth. This tribe then also created towns and villages and cities and civilizations. Civilizations then made government, and also art and culture. Nowadays, though, it seems like the woolly mammoth is us. We find ourselves fighting each other instead of finding solutions. We've forgotten that trust comes from being kind and decent and civil to each other. So the next time you see somebody on your right or on your left, ideologically you might disagree with, remember that we are all American. May you all be blessed. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for your service on the Keep Lake Beautiful Committee, and we appreciate all you do there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Demetrius Bronka.
My name is Demetrius Bronka, and I'm here to ask you to adopt a resolution that will save lives in your community and around the state, and I'm heartened to hear the words of the pastor this morning and the gentleman who just spoke, who are speaking of love and love being in action. I'm a dad from Tallahassee, and I'm on a mission to save lives. I'm a member of the Florida Hands Free Coalition, which consists of bicycle groups, pedestrian groups, insurance companies, law enforcement, nonprofits, and for-profit entities, and we're asking the Florida Legislature to pass a hands-free law in Florida, which would compel drivers to put their phones down while they are doing the most dangerous thing that we do. In states that have this law and are enforcing it, they have seen an immediate and measurable reduction by up to 25% in overall traffic fatalities. Here in Lake County, I'll give you the numbers, and we can do the math real quick. There were 5,500 crashes, 4,500 injuries, and 49 deaths. 25% of 49 is 10 families that would not be suffering what I and my family are suffering. My son is one of those statistics. My son, Anthony, was perhaps the greatest human being I've ever met. He was kind, he was funny, he was resilient, he was my absolute best friend in the world, and there's a darkness here on this planet that was not here when he shed his light. In 2024, I was able to usher meaningful distracted driving legislation through the Florida House. It was assigned to three committees, where it met unanimous bipartisan unopposed support. It never was voted on by the full House, because in the Senate, the Chairman of the Transportation Committee refused to put it on his agenda, and when I tried to speak to him, he did not have the time to allow me to answer any of his questions. In doing so, that senator sidelined our law enforcement to stop people from doing such dangerous behavior. I sent an email to you about two weeks ago with the draft resolution language and a one-pager, some stats and statistics, and if you pass this resolution, you'll be joining a growing chorus of counties and cities that are asking the Florida Legislature to do something about this dangerous behavior. And I'm hoping that by coming here today and telling you my personal story, and telling you how this unfair behavior that killed my son, who did everything right, Anthony did everything right, and was a man who knew better than to drive distracted and chose to do so anyway, who killed my son and left me and my family with a shredded life and rebuilding a life that beforehand was just a beautiful, it was a beautiful life. I had a beautiful life. So I'm here today to ask you to pass this resolution and show that love that the pastor was speaking of, love for our neighbors, love for our community by saving lives. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for what you're doing to try to change things, to make things better.
Yeah, I'm all over the place. I was in Osceola County yesterday. This morning, I'm here. Today, I'm going to Citrus and Sumter County to ask those bodies to do the same thing that I'm asking of you today.
And I have to say, I did a double take, because it said Leon County, and I thought, okay, did he mean to write Leon County?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for being here, and I think that we can bring it back and have a discussion and see if it's something that we as a board could get behind, whether, you know, we just need to take a look at it, and I appreciate that. Anybody want to weigh in?
I just want to, I thank. I just want to, I thank you for sharing your personal story. This is, I know, it's not easy. And you're absolutely right. We have an epidemic in this country. 45,000 or more people die every year of, and they're not accidents, they're crashes.
Right.
94% of them are at least.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for that because a lot of people still have the habit of referring it to as an accident. But if you are looking at your phone while you're driving, it's not an accident. You should expect to run into something.
Absolutely. And I would like to connect with you at some point after the meeting, but I really support what you do. And maybe we can talk about some other efforts as well because I think there's some, there's some things maybe the legislature could do to help as well.
I would love to do that.
We will connect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say, first of all, I'm sorry for your loss. I can't imagine that ever happening. And I'd be hopeful that we can come up with something that would be meaningful.
Thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker card, Joe Thamasie.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'm here this morning. I'm calling on my representative, Mr. Sabatini. I would like you to bring a workshop down to Claremont so that my residents and the people of Wellness Way have an opportunity and public view to put their sentiment out to the council. I hope that you will come down with this invitation. A lot of my fellow neighbors can't make it to this meeting at 9:00 AM in the morning. They have to work. When we had a city workshop at Claremont at 6:30 PM, we filled that hall. So I think that they deserved the opportunity to let you hear them, their thoughts on this MSTU. They're the ones that are footing the bills. So I'm asking that you please come down and give them the opportunity to speak to you. I don't think it's too much to ask. And I hope that you will collaborate with the city of Claremont. And Mr. Parks, please, don't be disparaging in your emails about the city. That, that was unkind. We're trying to find collaborative situations here and try to work together. So I think you should also involve the city of Claremont in this discussion if you come down. I ask, please. I know there's a few of you on here that are, already told me that you want this tax, but we do not. And we are the ones that matter. We are the ones that are footing this bill. So I ask you kindly, please come down, give these folks a chance to speak to you in person. Emails are impersonal, but in the public, being able to come up here and speak to you face to face is very important. And it's a major portion of these government activities. That they should be, have the opportunity to do it. Please, come down to Claremont, 6:30 PM, and let's talk. Thank you.
Just a quick update on that. Yeah, so we did have a workshop. We were there last two weeks ago. Staff, I'll update everybody on that a little later on in the meeting. As you know, we got to move through the agenda, but do have an update on that as well. There was a public comment that was accepted at that, at that workshop on this particular issue and the Wellness Way as a whole. So I'll cover all that a little bit later. As far as the disparaging remarks, I think you all know, you know, the problem with that comment is I think some of you that have known me for years know that that's, I don't operate that way. That's the last thing I do is I, the very last option for me is to make disparaging comments. And I'm preaching to work with the city the entire time. So I don't, I don't think, I think that attitude has always been put out there to try to work with the city. So I, you know, I'm sorry, I just respectfully disagree with that. Anyway, more, more, more on that later. So Commissioner, I know, yeah, I'll, I'll get to it a little bit later.
Just a few comments I was going to bring up at the end, but you know, since it's here and I'll be quick. You know, obviously, I learned about the MSTU issue when I first got on the commission and Melanie did a very good job briefing me. And, you know, I definitely admire the passion of Commissioner Parks and other members of the commission to develop a vision for an area that otherwise did not exist. And of course, part of that vision was essentially leaning on a tool, MSTUs that, you know, are very appropriate in some, sometimes in some places. I'm just speaking out loud here, you know, sort of extemporaneously, but at this point, I don't feel, and I'm probably in the minority here, but I just want to express to my commission out of respect to them, my, my position here as it's developing, is that I don't always think it's the best tool, most appropriate tool. And so even though I'm probably in the minority, I don't support its use in that manner. I feel like the commission doesn't see that the juice has worked the squeeze in terms of what they're paying. Obviously, you know, I believe that there are going to be people who completely disagree and commissioners who disagree too. And that, and I totally respect that and I understand that because at the end of the day, it's just about, you know, what tools are most appropriate to create the compelling vision we have for that part of the county. I would, not yet, but eventually, like to see a vote out of respect to the constituents who are so earnestly passionate, probably our most passionate commissioner going here, Mr. Joe, to see where the commission is on, on that MSTU repeal. Now, with that said, I'm not rushing it. I want, I just encourage everyone to take a look at it, keep an open mind, talk to them. And then maybe we have, can have a vote on it. But honestly, I understand that, you know, this is a long-term project. You know, the county is invested in that area. But I spoke to them a little bit during the election, especially afterwards. And at this time, I feel like I'd like to see that repealed and those people given a little bit more economic freedom with their property, property tax bill. With that said, again, I'm not making any motion yet. I just hope that the, you know, commission will keep an open mind despite, you know, our past positions on it. And then maybe we can revisit it. In terms of a workshop, honestly, unless it's unique information that we don't have access to, I don't, I don't see the immediate need of putting the entire commission down there. Because I believe you, I believe there's going to be a workshop, you know, a room full of people who say, this is a terrible tax. You know, we need to get rid of this. I also believe that there are people who probably believe in Commissioner Parks' vision of the county, which is it's worth it. And that, and that the end product is going to be worth it. And there's going to be a debate. At this point, I'm, I'm in the camp of repeal, but I just hope everybody will look at it and then eventually we can have a further discussion and that. And I just wanted to put my thoughts on the record. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and when we get to our, my comments later on, I have quite a lengthy breakout on that, so.
And you're going to address that during your report?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because one of the things I wondered about was the possibility of, until you have more residents online that are contributing, that maybe there's a way to stage this in such a way so that it would lower the amount significantly and it would be staged. Okay, and my biggest concern is about notice. If people know that they're, this is part of the program when they buy property, whether it's investment property or their own home, to me, that's key. Like if you have the notice and you understand, or every, the information is there. It's up to you then, as the investor or the homeowner to, to, you know, to talk to someone about it and what does it mean? But if there's a better way to do it and make it more fair with the idea that we were trying to elevate this area in such a way so that it wasn't just the same old thing, it was going to be something that was special and that would be reflected in the overall feel of that, that area. So we'll, we'll get to that when we get to your comments.
I'll address notice too during the comments.
So just, just to bring back my memory, if I'm not mistaken, I've had several meetings on this MSTU. We brought it back down to Claremont to see if Claremont wanted to have the MSTU. And my position's always been that if you don't want the MSTU, fine, we won't do all the enhancements that are there. We'll do behaia grass and mow like we normally do every other county road. I think that the people in Claremont and the people down in that area want enhancements that people in Astor shouldn't have to pay for. So you either get behaia grass and mowed once a month or you get your enhancements. I mean, I don't know what, what else there is.
And I agree, and I can touch on that too.
And the key would be to know really what people, you know, you're, there are times when you have to say, okay, majority rules. Let's see what everybody wants. And let's see, and let's see if we can present it in a way where they could actually make a decision about how much it would be and how it could potentially be staged. And because we know how it works now, when it's just a regular right of way, there's only so much attention you can give those. So, okay, all right. Yes, sir.
One quick comment. My concern's always been that there's going to be housing down there. And we need that commercial aspect to support it. So I, I understand the concept, but from what I can see, all we're doing is putting housing in. And, and the commercial's not, not there.
I can address that.
Okay. I would appreciate it because my understanding is now that there's one large parcel that is starting to be sold off piecemeal, which was supposed to be one large development. So I, that's what my concern, it's always been my concern sitting on planning and zoning, is that what we have and what we get might be two different things.
This is worthy of workshop, I think, because all along, the idea was they were set asides. So that if those set asides are not developed for commercial purposes, they cannot be developed for residential. So in a worst case scenario, you have green space plus residential, but that green space cannot be, kind of like a golf course. If you've got the regulations in place, you can't switch that over and decide you're going to develop it. Those set asides were supposed to address commercial, job creation, employment center type uses. So if that's not what's happening, if things are being dismantled, I want to know about that too. Because if you think about it from the taxation standpoint and the MSTU, once you have your commercial in place, you're going to have a lot more money to spread around as far as in keeping the right of ways enhanced. So that would take a huge burden off the residential. But we got to then make the commercial happen. How do you make the commercial happen? We've got folks that, I mean, this is what they are working on day in and day out, is trying to find those companies that will come and take down those pieces and develop them or build, you know, build improvements on them so they can attract companies here. And I know all of you have had discussions with, whether it's lead or it's our own economic development team, that they are aggressively working on trying to help market those commercial parcels. So maybe that's part of the staging, that it doesn't kick in for the residential until you have the commercial online that can help share that burden.
Yeah, I think we, we got answers on that and no, no residential area has been approved what should be commercial. So there's been no sacrifice to the cap that's been on Wellness Way. And no sacrifice to the vision of it or the rules. In fact, the rules continue to get more strict. We keep, we've made changes. Some of you remember this. We've made changes to make it even more strict when it comes to development through the last couple of years. So I can go over all that in the report, but I would encourage you, the great presentation that Jennifer Kathleen put together with Meg. And it's a very good detailed presentation on, I'll cover in summary later on in the meeting. But I would encourage you to eat a copy of that.
Maybe we can have that. Maybe we could get that presentation and it could even be made in the form of a video so that that's something that could be circulated to the residents.
We do, and, and we'll have news about the website for Wellness Way because part of the issue with this is in the absence of having information out there, social media does its thing and you start, you start hearing things like, oh, there's 30,000 homes going to be built in Wellness Way. No, there's not. There could have been 30,000 homes without Wellness Way. But that's a piece of history that we don't always cover because, you know, it's been 12 years now. And we have different people, new people coming in and commissions have changed and everything. So I think it's going to be helpful to have that put on the website as well. The video that you're talking about, that's a good idea of this presentation. But there'll also be, it'll also be, you know, the facts about Wellness Way on the website and a tool that lead will use as we now get into the, the next stage of this plan. And that is to go to acquiring the larger, higher wage employers that go alongside of that. So I can touch on that a little bit more in my report, though.
Am I understanding that you want to do a separate presentation wholly?
Oh, no, well, no, I'm, I'm going to update a little more on my comments later in the meeting. But the presentation, I think the, the chair was mentioning, we can give that to you.
So may I make a suggestion that maybe we do a presentation during a regular board meeting just on this because this is the, this is streamed live via Lakefront TV, which is all over the county. That way, everybody in the county can see it and then you can give your updates. You present it because you're the most experienced in this whole thing. So I would say, I would like to see you have a formal presentation to the public on the Wellness Way and the Wellness Way Plan.
And we can do that.
Yeah, and then staff, IT staff can break that out and create a link. And then that can be shared around the, the community. I think that could be extremely helpful.
And I, I think we also need to meet with the developers and tell, and basically have them, tell the people buying down there that there is an MSTU, just like the villages does with the CDD and the bonds. I mean, we have to educate these people that they're not only paying ad ver lorem, but there's an MSTU that goes along with it. So, and it might be buried in the back, I don't know, of a contract.
Yeah, and, you know, again, I was planning on covering that in my report, but, but I'll say that, you know, I did research on that. We have, we have notices of people that knew there was an MSTU. Now, could Lennar, for instance, have done a better job? Yeah, probably. We also keep in mind that all this, we do have, we had a hearing, so it all went out on trim notice, correct? You know, saying if you object to this or have questions, show up on these dates. You know, nobody showed up. Plus, it was in closing statements. There's one neighborhood I'm looking at just to double check. I am very sensitive to that because I agree if somebody, if there was some way that somehow the ball was dropped on notice, I do think we need to be fair. So I'm always open to that. And I think we can continue to look at those certain, certain circumstances. And I think all of you don't want to do that. So we'll look at that. But the notice was there, again, I think that's what the, the website will help too in the future is because we'll be very direct and explain what, what that is and what it's used for. I mean, there was a question about what it was used for. I'm straying into my report later, but.
Okay, all right. And Joe, are you going to be able to stick around for the rest of this? Okay, all right. Okay. Last card on non-adjunct items is Cindy Newton.
Morning. Cindy Newton, District Four. I just want to talk a little bit about the project in Mount Plymouth Greens. It's already been approved. For those that aren't in District Four, this is also the same area that had the park vacation up at the last meeting. It is in the Wicca River Protection Area. And the arsenic contamination that's on this property, not only was in the soil, also it affected groundwater. There's a plume that is still within this area right here in a well. It has been shown as being stable at this time. There are a lot of restrictions that have been placed for deed restrictions on this. It can't be used for residential, a park, retention, stormwater, things like that. It's pretty much just going to be dead, dead property. The site also has to be inspected annually. And there's a two-foot soil cap that's in place over this. And during the inspection, it has to be inspected to see whether or not that's been disturbed and be repaired. If there is a storm event, 25-year frequency, 24-hour duration event, nine inches or more rain, there has to be an inspection. So Milton filled that. And I'd like a copy of the report that they should have had an investigation and testing done to make sure this was still in place. Utilities are going to be placed, be brought in along X-more, which goes right beside this. If the two-foot area in this maintenance area is disturbed, then there's very specific protocol in these restrictions with testing of the soil as it's brought out. It's got to be taken off site. So the utility. So the utility companies are also going to have to know what these protocols are. I just don't know if there's anything in place in the current PUD to address making sure the annual inspections are done, the stormwater events, if those inspections are done, if the utilities are brought up to speed on what they have to do if they disturb the site. Also, future residents have to be informed, and I don't know if that's anywhere in there, if it's going to be buried in an HOA. So there's just a lot of questions. And if any of the swells, detention, retention features, ditches, anything that disturbs this, it can destabilize that groundwater plume or increase the potential for exposure to contaminants resulting in risk for human health, public safety, and the environment. So I think the county needs to keep an eye on this project as it moves forward. And.
Thank you, Cindy. Yeah, I would like to have the county attorney staff take a look at, for those of you that weren't on the board, when this came through, the golf course property was, I believe, zoned R6. It had a residential zoning. They could plat it without bringing it to the board for any kind of discretion. They chose to go the PUD route and bring it to us. Now, it was over, I think, the number of units that then triggered the PUD. So if they had done the straight zoning and just platted it, they wouldn't have got the number of lots they were asking for, so trade-off there. In the PUD, we put some conditions. They had to do some traffic calming, improve some of the roads, do some paving of roads that weren't paved. And they had to do, you know, we had the normal things you would have in a PUD, dark skies and all of that kind of stuff. Usually in those PUDs, there's some language, too, about the requirement that all other regulations, any other agency regulations, those things all have to be complied with. So I'm not sure, I mean, but we didn't know about the arsenic. We knew that they were going to have to do some testing to see. There was speculation that because it had been a golf course and it had been operating for all those years, that stuff had been stored where the, all the maintenance work would be done. And so there was some concern there, but they had to do that on their own. Then this came up, that it was much more extensive than they anticipated. So I'm assuming that DEP is the regulatory agency?
So I have the ordinance in front of me. It's a 2016 ordinance. They were originally R3. They did change to a PUD. They were granted 197 units. There is a provision under the environmental section of the ordinance that says mandatory soil sampling shall be required in accordance with ASTM standards where golf courses are consistent environmental condition, and the results provided to Lake County and to FDEP. Developers shall address all remediation actions per the findings prior to commencement of the PUD. So they are required to do soil sampling. They are required to give those reports to the county. Ultimately, it would be FDEP probably that would come in and enforce, but we do have the ability under this ordinance to require them to do the samplings.
Okay, so it sounds like, and knowing what I know, have learned recently about DEP, is that they're somewhat shorthanded and they're not super proactive. And that's concerning to me, and I feel like we need to take a look at those reports. And for example, like with Hurricane Milton, knowing that that was a, in that particular area was like a thousand-year storm event. So there was a lot of flushing going on in those soils potentially. So I think that we need to make sure that somebody's taking a look at these reports and that the extent of development is protected, whether, there needs to be some fencing, there needs to be a way to make sure that the homeowners and people that live out there now aren't getting into this area where these soils are. It's just.
And institutional control.
Yeah.
Do we want to make a, not a resolution, but directive for staff to request an immediate soil sample test? I mean, might as well just ask right now and be like, hey, when's your soil sample coming through?
Yeah, there should, they should have been providing them. I'm assuming that they were providing them to staff.
Phase two sampling done?
I'll have to go back and look through the files. The files are pretty extensive. We've had some public records requests, so I do have the files in my office, but we'll look and see. If we haven't received copies, we can, I'm sure, pull them down from DEP's website.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there's some regulation on the depth of the soil sample, so they may have to get down to a certain depth in order to even provide the soil sample.
Yeah, it does reference ASTM standards, so I'm assuming that there's some guidance there.
Yeah, they would do the surface and then down into the superficial aquifer with those two samples.
Yes, the DEP does have all these files on their website, except for any testing done for Milton. The current testing, annual testing and stormwater testing does not have to be remitted now to DEP because they've signed off on this, but DEP does have the right to request it. So it does have to stay on file with the developer. But I don't know how that stays moving forward once the developments.
But you're saying that they completed remediation.
And I did print out pertinent information, so you wouldn't have to go through all the files. And that way, you do have a copy of the main sections, and then you could look into the DEP files for any.
But we don't, we don't know whether the storm event testing was required during remediation, or is it an ongoing requirement?
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. As far as the information that we have or the information that's available from DEP, I don't believe that we have anybody on staff with the necessary certifications that could look in-depth at those. So we may have to go to an outside consultant and have them review all of that information, and then let us know if there's something else that needs to be done or should have been done or could be done.
Yeah. I just think it's important, knowing that it's not, it's not just that there's this new development coming onboard. There are a lot of people that live all through that area, so it's something.
They're on wells.
And they're on wells. So I think it's something that we need to give attention to.
I got a couple of suggestions that we can connect afterwards about where to look on DEP's website, see what kind of closures have been done, what letters they've issued.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. Now, moving on to, oh, online, do we have someone online?
Yes, we have a couple of people online. The first one is Barbara Morris. Barbara, you should be able to unmute your line and state your name and your comments to the board.
My name's Barbara Morris. I live in District Three. I actually live in the Mount Plymouth subdivision that was just being discussed. I want to add to Ms. Newton's commentary. As a resident here, I am very concerned that the county knew about this contamination. DEP knew about this contamination and the potential that it had in our water supply, but no agency notified any resident at any time, so that we could keep track of our wells to see what we're drinking. So this contamination, obviously, has been there for at least 15 years since the place shut down. Is there a system, or is there something that the county can do to help ensure our safety when a contamination is located like this, especially with the potential of a PUD coming in with heavy equipment and disturbing X-More, which is bounding on this, which was not tested? What can the county do to help keep the citizens informed for their own safety when contamination of this, of this nature is discovered?
It's a very good question, Barbara, and we're going to be looking at that, because I'm thinking maybe some residents, if they're willing to allow testing of their water in nearby locations, if we could do some actual testing of their well water, that could be very helpful. And then providing information once, once we have that. And if we do need to put people on notice to have, you know, they should consider having a private company come in and test, but I think we need to gather some information, and we need to consider exactly how we provide notice. If I lived out there and I didn't know anything about this, I would expect that my county government would let me know that it's a possibility. Probably want to have your water tested, or at least give them enough information so they can make that decision.
I agree.
Okay, we also have Sandy Russ. Sandy, you should be able to unmute your line and state your name and your comments to the board.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Russ, and I live in the Alaha, Lake Apopka Rural Protection Area. And my concern today is about the growth in this area and other rural areas. And first, I'd like to thank Commissioner Campione for her efforts in looking into Lake County becoming a charter county, and how that is a way for the county and the rural neighbors and citizens there to more effectively manage growth and annexation into our neighborhoods. I recently read on the Leesburg City Council meetings from a couple of weeks ago that they are definitely planning to annex and amend the zoning for the future development of the Silver Springs development, which is over 880 homes. I've been to a couple of meetings with the attorneys that represent the developers, and there's not a whole lot of listening going on there for our concerns about another huge development into this rural area. Our roads in these areas can't handle the increase in people, the cars, the environment, and our natural resources are being negatively impacted by this unmanaged growth or potential growth into these rural lands. So again, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Campione for her efforts. We appreciate it, and please continue your work to protect our rural lands and our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Do we have any other comments? Yes?
Yes, next up is Javier Matos. You should be able to unmute your line. Please state your name and your comments to the board.
Yes, hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Javier Matos. I live in Claremont in the Ridgeview community. Where a developer opted out of the Wellness Way corridor enhancements, therefore, I believe the MSTU should not apply to us. I have spoken to many of our neighbors here verbally, and also through our Facebook page, Facebook group page that we have, and unfortunately, many of them were not able to attend today's session to also be against this MSTU. That's why I think it is a good idea to have another meeting, where you guys can come and we can see each other and discuss this. I did attend the workshop in Claremont, where I also mentioned that I believe we didn't want to be part of this. I did review the closing documentation, because that was one of the things that we talked about. I did both, you know, I have an Adobe Acrobat copy of it. I did a Ctrl+F to see if it mentioned anything about MSTU or municipal service tax unit or whatever it means. Nothing came up. We were surprised to see this added to our property taxes this year, which increased our taxes by about $500 approximately. I don't remember receiving any kind of email, phone call, mailer, any kind of communication saying that this MSTU was going to be applied to our taxes. From what I understand, this tax is something that our developer opted out of, that our community was not designed for, and we were not informed about. In my opinion, it seems to me that deceptive practices were used to impose this tax illegally to our community, as it wasn't as close to us. This is almost like buying a car, a year later, receiving an RV, and then, you know, the dealer telling us, you got to pay for it, but it's okay, because you're going to make a lot of family memories. It just, that's the only analogy I can come up with that kind of helps to drill down how we in Ridgeview and our surrounding communities feel about this. We didn't ask for it, weren't notified, therefore should apply to us. I kindly request that you really look into this and exclude my community from this undue burden for the reasons that I stated. Thank you so much for your time.
And your community is Ridgeview? Okay. All right, any other callers?
Yes, I believe we had one more. Roxanne, you should be able to unmute your line and state your name and comments to the board.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Roxanne Malozzi. I live in the Ridgeview subdivision. I am coming on Zoom, and I thank you for this opportunity, because I do work at night. So I am sitting here waiting to go to sleep in a little while. I am just, want to just talk for a couple of seconds about this MTSU. I was shocked when I opened up my tax bill and saw this on there. I am one of those residents that was not aware of anything. I have gone back to the builders, the salespeople. I have looked through all documents. I have done everything that I possibly could to see what I have missed on my part, because I do know that when you have closing stuff, things do get missed. But this was something that was never, ever, ever told to us on our side or given in documents or anything. I know I'm obligated for property taxes. I get that, but I really, this MTSU, MTSU tax was a shocker to us. I don't know. I feel like I get where you guys are coming from. You're looking to do great things out here, but I don't think it should be on the dime of the citizens that were, and the homeowners that have bought houses here. I mean, yeah, we, we pay our taxes. We give you a lot of money every year. We're, there should be other ways to put in pretty grass and pretty flowers and things like that. You know, I did hear a remark about, well, we'll just use regular grass. Well, if I have to pay $400 a year, then I probably just want regular grass on the side, on the roadways. It just doesn't seem right that there was this, just all of a sudden, hey, you're going to pay another amount of money for property taxes because you decided to move to Wellness Way. Wellness Way, to us, was being sold as subdivisions. It was not being sold. Yeah, we heard you were bringing stuff out here, but I moved here to, for a subdivision. I didn't move out here because I'm waiting for a job in these commercial sites. I'm here because I just want to live there like Luisa. I wanted to live in this area. I don't think, I'm totally against this MTSU tax, and I really believe in, I thank Joe for standing up for us all this time, and I think there does need to be a better way for all of us to come together and everybody can say what they really mean about this tax. And if they knew about this tax, I don't think we knew about it on this side. Maybe Wellness Ridge does. I don't really know. I didn't go over there, because they did have the CDD, and it's very clear about that. Lennar told us about that, so we moseyed on to the other side. It's just something that really needs to be looked at. It was a shocker, and it's a lot of money, and I think it needs to be fair, and it just needs, does not need to go on the citizens' just in Wellness Way. I mean, we could talk about the cars, we could talk about everything. There, there's hundreds of cars coming through here. If that's the case, everybody from Lake County should be paying who's going through these roads. This just, it just doesn't seem right at this time to charge your residents all this money for pretty little roads for a future that we really don't know if it's going to exist.
All right, thank you very much for calling in. And any more callers? We do?
Yes, next up is Erin. Erin, please state your full name and then give your comments to the board.
Hi, I apologize. I'm trying to move to a new room, so my kids aren't seeing. My name is Erin Fullwiler. I live in Wellness Ridge. And I was in the process of trying to compose an email, because I wasn't sure if I would be able to speak at this meeting today. But I have a few things that I wanted to address, and I know it's hard when people are speaking and they give like multiple points, and you can't really like comment on each one of them, but that's kind of how I feel in these meetings as well. But I, so I live in Wellness Ridge, and many of us have concerns about this MSTU tax. But my specific concerns today are that, you know, we have been hearing multiple ways, multiple times, that we were not notified about paying about paying this MSTU tax. So, in my email that I'm composing to all of you, I will share my personal documents, which I am not happy about having to disclose. But if you do the search and find and type in MSTU, you will find that in my closing documents for Wellness Ridge, there is absolutely no mention of MSTU. Like some of the other residents had said, we had moved here for a subdivision. We had been in a different area of Lake County and we had a terrible situation with a neighbor who, we ended up having to involve police a few times. And so, we were looking to just move away from that area to keep our kids safe. And we found Wellness Way and it was safe and far away from the neighbor who was harassing us. So, we found a house that we could afford and it was barely affording it, but we found it and here we are. And we've been happy and we feel safe. And now we hear that we're going to be having to pay another $500 each year, $400, $500 that we don't have because of something that we were not disclosed about. And it's enhancements based on regional benefits, which, you know, you guys have mentioned this Wellness Way project presentation. In the presentation to the city of Claremont, a few weeks ago, they had mentioned multiple times about the regional benefits of Wellness Way, which is great. But I am not looking for regional benefits, I'm looking for just a house. And if it's regional benefits, then we should not be the only ones paying for this. Everybody is going to be using this road. And I understand the comment about somebody in Eustis shouldn't have to pay for something all the way out here because they probably wouldn't be here. But that's where like an additional solution needs to be found, such as, you know, I don't know, because I'm not, this is, I'm not like, I'm not in this sort of, you know, I'm a teacher, so this is not my realm. But some sort of solution where, you know, there can be like a toll or something that like whoever is using this area can pay, help pay towards it because like we're not a gated community. And so, anybody at any time can be coming in here, using our area, using our trails that we're supposed to have, or the benches, or the fancy grass, or the employment centers, or the shopping, and all of these things. But yet, we are the only ones paying for it and I don't feel like that's fair.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I don't know if you heard, but the buzzard went off. But we've heard you loud and clear and we've got your comments. Appreciate you calling in. Eric, anyone else? Okay, that concludes the public comment period. We're going to move on to the next part of our agenda, and that is a presentation of proclamations. And we have one on the agenda today. And I'm asking for a motion to approve this as a proclamation celebrating the 140th anniversary of the First Presbyterian Church of Eustis.
As a good Presbyterian, I'd be happy to make that.
Oh, that is wonderful. That's a nice point.
And I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have Jeanne Thomas, who's an elder with First Presbyterian Church. And she's here to receive the proclamation. And then, I'm also going to attend their church service on Sunday and we'll do another presentation at their church service. So, I'll go forward to read the proclamation. We also have some photos that we'd like to show, which demonstrate the beauty of the church. And I believe they're going to show some of the stained glass windows, which are just magnificent. And my mother was reading the history of the First Presbyterian Church of Eustis. And there are so many families throughout the Eustis area that have been members of this church and have been involved in this church. And there's a really neat story about the Farrens who had a department store downtown. And they were planning to do some renovations on their home at that time. And the church needed some additional work. And they postponed their own personal renovations and repairs to their own home so that they could contribute the money to help add to the church and take care of things at the church. And I thought that was a really neat story. And it's nice that it's about the Farrens, but I could tell you story after story about other members of this congregation that have made sacrifices through the years in order to do what they thought was important for the church and for the community. And, yeah, so it's a really, really super special place. And we're hoping that we're going to get these, there we go. Here is our beautiful First Presbyterian Church of Eustis. And you can see how gorgeous it is. I hope we're going to see some windows. There we go. And I'm going to read the proclamation as you look at these photos. And Jeanne, if you'll come up to the podium, then I'll be able to give you the proclamation. Whereas the First Presbyterian Church in Eustis is celebrating its 140th anniversary in February. And whereas in 1881, G.D. Clifford, one of the initial settlers in the city of Eustis, built a general store wherein the large hall on the second floor, town meetings and religious services were held. And whereas Dr. J.H. Potter, a retired Presbyterian minister in 1884, extended the call to organize the Presbyterian Church of Eustis with 13 charter members. And whereas A.S. Pendry, owner of the Oclawaha Hotel, donated land at Center Street and Citrus Avenue for the church, which cost $3,750 to build. And members dedicated the wooden building on January 7, 1885. And whereas in 1912, due to a growing congregation, the building was moved down the street to its present location on Center Street and construction was started on the new building, which was dedicated on April 5, 1914. Whereas the modified Gothic structure with its beautiful stained glass windows has stood strong over time. And whereas the modified, whereas the church has been an important part of Eustis's history and continues to be a beacon of hope, faith, and resilience in Lake County. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Florida, proclaims that Lake County does hereby proclaim and celebrate the positive impact the church has had on its congregation, the city of Eustis, and the Lake County community, as well as the history and beauty of the First Presbyterian Church in Eustis, and congratulates the church on their 140th anniversary. And this proclamation shall be spread upon the minutes of this meeting. So, thank you for being here, Jeanne.
Thank you, I appreciate you so much. We appreciate you, thank you so much.
Would you like to thank the board?
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity. And thank you, Commissioner Campione. The vision for First Presbyterian Church is to reflect and reveal the unselfish love of Christ in all that we do. And we are going to do that for 140 more years and counting. And we just want to, want you to know that it is so important for us to be partners in the community, partners with Eustis, to share the love and care and nurture our fellow citizens. And thank you for this recognition today. And we welcome you all Saturday afternoon to our wonderful open house and tour from 2:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
All right, well, we've had sort of some really nice feel-good moments and things happening today at our board meeting, as well as some really difficult issues. But I appreciate your support on that. And I know it means a lot to the congregation to be able to recognize the church. And then, it is quite a milestone. Okay, moving on to the Clerk of Court's consent agenda, Mr. Cooney.
Good morning, again. I have two items in my consent agenda for your approval.
I moved to approve and I'm glad to see that Clerk of Court is here today.
Yes, we welcome you. We always love to have you at our meetings, but Christie does a really great job when you're not here.
Well, she should.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on then to the county clerk, or the county consent agenda. And we did pull tab 6. Do we have any other items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Move for approval, minus 6.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, coming back to tab 6. We've got Senator Hayes here. Just going to check to see whether, I think I'll just, I'll turn the microphone over to you for your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. I have a question. When y'all go home, do you feel like you've been in a wrestling match with that six-letter word, "Growth"? This is the second time now that I've been here. And issue after issue after issue is growth. Sadly, I don't, I don't bring you any different issue. It's growth this morning for me as well. But I am here this morning simply to ask you, please let us continue with this contract with the architect and construction management firm. The Supervisors of Elections Office is in dire need of more space for administrative purposes and for warehouse purposes. That need grows with each new home that's approved to be built. I don't want to go through all the details of this ongoing saga, but please allow us to get to the point where we have a guaranteed maximum price. Then, we can deal with facts that we know how much money we're talking about. Last year, the board gave me authorization to bring to you a project not to exceed a guaranteed maximum price of $14 million. I'm asking you today to allow me the time to complete that project. That's the completeness of what I'm asking for. If for any reason I cannot provide that stated objective, I'll sit down and be quiet. The GMP will be a figure that we can all use to determine if we're going to be able to bring the project in at that figure or not. That's all I'm asking. Let me finish the job that you gave me last fall. I'd like to make a few points, if I may. The need study that you paid $20,000 for showed that we need 50,000 square feet facility to accommodate our current needs and provide for the growth projected for the next 20 years. The estimate for that, without any bids, was $24 million and the board at that time said, "No deal." Then, last fall, as I mentioned, the ask was for two metal buildings for $14 million. At that time, you authorized me to take charge of all the pre-construction items and bring that project home. I'm still in the process of doing that. We discovered that that 40,000 square feet would provide only the room that we need now and leave no room for future growth. That led to the proposal for the tilt wall construction and the $22 million price that you said no to the last time I was here. Your last action was say no to that price. And now, I'm back to the $14 million, 40,000 square foot project. We need that space as soon as it can be built. Again, all I'm asking for is time to get the bids in. The architect needs four to six weeks to complete the drawings. Then, we need time to get it out into the field with the contractors and get that guaranteed maximum price. I will also say that it's my plan to bring to you a composite price, guaranteed maximum. And then, we can also split it so you can have the administrative building in one price and know whether we can do that or not. As I said before, the cost of turning the present facility into a warehouse is zero. We can do that without costing the county any extra money. But, and so with that, I would like to see you not approve this termination of these contracts, but let me go ahead and continue to do the job you asked me to do last November, or whenever it was.
All right, thank you for that presentation and your little bit different approach, if I'm hearing this right. And that would be that if the contract continued and the two metal buildings were designed, that you would bring in a price for them as two separate projects to, for the board to consider whether the board would support just doing one versus two at this time. So, that's a little different than what we've been asked before.
Well, yes, I'm asking for both of them to be built at the same time for $14 million. That's my goal. But if I can't do that, then my offer is, let's, and y'all have mentioned, unfortunately, this is the third group of Commissioners that I've been dealing with on this thing. And you two new Commissioners, you're new to the game, so to speak. But the others have been going through this with me. And all along, I've been telling you that you can build the administrative suites, if you will, the administrative building on the property down there if you're, you know, if you're not willing to do both of them at the same time. So, I'm open to whatever we can do, but we need space. That's it, we need space. And we can do it in piecemeal if you want to, or we can do it all at once.
All right, any?
Yeah, I guess I got to say something. I was on the selection committee and I was here when this was first brought up. I believe Senator Hayes brought up that he could build two buildings for $14 million guaranteed maximum price. We agreed to that. We said, "Okay, let's go ahead and move forward." I was on the selection committee and every firm there heard me say the guaranteed maximum price was $14 million. You come back with a price of $26 million.
No, sir, that's not correct. It was 22.
Am I dreaming or is that what we just, we turned down a couple of weeks ago? It was $26 million?
No, sir, what you turned down a couple of weeks ago was $22 million.
Okay, 22, sorry. All right, 14, 22, 26, 30.
But there's.
So, anyway, anyway. The guaranteed maximum price was $14 million for two buildings. You came in at 22 million. Now, you're saying you can come back in at 14 million. I don't believe it. I think what we need to do is just buy the building you're in currently, make it administrative, and have you have a warehouse space somewhere offsite and just be done with this thing. Let's stop kicking the can down the road. Let's stop wasting the money. Give you a definite answer if you're staying where you are. You're going to have a warehouse somewhere else. That's it. That's where I stand.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Help me understand the financial wisdom in your proposal when you can turn the existing facility into a warehouse for no cost at all. And yet, you're telling me that you need to spend several million to renovate that place, to buy it, renovate it? And you have inadequate parking there right now. It's not going to work. And you've got a completely occupied building. Are you going to ask my people to stay at work there while all the jackhammers are going on in the reconstruction of it? I think that is, I think that's a very unwise choice, Commissioner.
So, I live right next to the Supervisor of Elections. I do not agree with the inadequate parking all the time. Sure, there's inadequate parking.
Not all the time, but it's during, during early voting.
I was able to park there just fine during early voting. I was only there once. So, I'm just telling you my personal experience. I drive up and down that road several times a day. I don't see a need for big conference call centers when you can do that offsite. I don't see a need for big training rooms when you can do that offsite. You can do those trainings offsite that happen once a year, several times a week a year. It's your business, you know it better than I do. So, I'm sure, and you're a smart guy, you can figure this out. I'm just saying, we have spent a ton of money for no reason. Well, actually, we've spent a ton of money to vet this to say, maybe the Supervisor of Elections is in the proper place at this time. And in 15 years, we may have to move. But we don't have to move right now and we can save that money now.
Sir, if you want to save money, why don't you cancel the contract at Sears? That's costing you forty-six thousand dollars a month. You can save some real money if you terminate that contract.
We are, we are currently working on that. That contract was, was brought up mainly because of you.
I had nothing to do with that contract, sir. I want the record to reflect that completely. All I'm asking for again, Madam Chair, is permission to do what you agreed to do last fall. I'll, I'll bring you that guaranteed maximum price. If it's, if it's more than fourteen million, then I, as I said, I'll sit down and be quiet.
I'll make a motion that we terminate the agreement.
Second. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Not, not me.
And, well, my further discussion would be that I do like the idea of breaking it in half and the idea of a price for each separate building as a possibility, because one of those buildings could be what you just described, Commissioner Smith, which would be a storage building. I, I do think that there are a lot of folks that like the idea of where the location is now, because it's right on the highway, it's prominent. And if you turn that into a storage center, the one thing I worry about, you can have people go in there, and there's not gonna be an office, there's gonna be a sign on the door that says, you gotta now drive over to nineteen in order to do your paperwork or.
We could very easily have it in a small office there with two or three people in it to take care of those constituents as they come in.
And I, and I appreciate what you're saying, that you've already got warehouse. I mean, you've, that building already has the back entry points. You already have places that things can be stored. And so your request was if you were going to stay in the building on the highway, that you, that could be warehousing right off the bat. You don't have to do anything different. Here's the thing. We're, we're trying to look at this from the standpoint of how do we save money and make sure the service is still being provided? We also have the delicate situation of you being a constitutional office. You're duly elected, you have jobs that you have to perform and that you have to provide to the people of Lake County. So, but we're the money people, technically, the way it works, the way the Florida constitution works. And so we're strictly looking at it from the standpoint of money and, and the convenience to residents and the fact that this is such an essential part of our local government. We all come with our different opinions and how we would do it if we were running that office versus sitting here as a county commission. So I do think there has to be a certain amount of deference to you as the one that runs the office, and your preference is to use the building on four forty-one for the purpose of, if, if you were to only get one building. And you could have one building for storage and one building for administrative. Your preference is administrative to be the new building and the building on four forty-one to be your warehousing. I'm fine with deferring to you on that decision. I personally like the idea of breaking it into two buildings, get a price for each one, so that if we went forward with one, that we would only be in seven million dollars compared to fourteen or compared to twenty-two. So from the money side, it makes, it makes sense to break it into two parts. And we have to, if, even under Commissioner Smith's proposal, we still have to find a warehousing location. If we, if it were to go the way that you want, with keep administrative on the highway, warehousing somewhere else. Either way, you still have to have another building. So why not go ahead and get the pricing for two separate buildings with one of them being storage? And it, and then my argument would be at the end of the day, let the supervisor decide, would he, would he rather have that as storage or would he rather have that as administrative, because he's the one that's running the office? So we have a motion on the table. That's just the discussion, that's where I, I would go with it. And that would be my proposal to the board.
Just a quick question. How, so how much are we talking about than an additional fees to get to that point?
Well, you said they're four to six weeks out to.
That's right, they're four to six weeks.
And then you've got to meet with contracts to decide what your price would be and knowing that it can't be over X amount. But we would want two buildings out of it. We wouldn't want it to be, oh, well, it's, you know, it, it needs to be broken in.
I'd be happy to break that down.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and my question, though, it goes back to kind of like the discussion we had last, last meeting. I mean, if there's no desire on the board, at least, you know, numbers-wise to move forward, then, you know, why would we, why would we go forward with?
Well, my answer to that.
I mean, I understand your point. You know, I've been with you for years on this, but.
Well, Commissioner Parks, the answer to that is, number one, the board doesn't have any hard figures to deal with. All they've dealt with so far has been estimates. And the idea of comparing this fourteen million dollar project with the twenty-two million dollar project is a totally bogus idea. That's comparing an apple with a banana. And, and that dog won't hunt, because the twenty-two million dollar project price tag was for a tilt wall concrete two-story building that was, had a fifteen thousand square foot footprint. So it gives us thirty thousand square feet and then twenty thousand square foot metal building for the warehouse, which the need study showed, excuse me, instead of fifty thousand, matter of fact, I brought to the board the need for fifty thousand square feet based on the homework that I had done myself and my staff. The need study showed we need forty-eight thousand four hundred, so I was off by sixteen hundred square feet. And I didn't charge you anything for that, and yet the.
For twenty years.
That's right, for, to hold the growth for twenty years, that's right. But anyhow, back to the current situation, the, you know, really, I think you need to forget the twenty-two million dollars. That, that ship has sailed, it's gone down the tube. And so you don't want to, to pay that for tilt wall construction. So now I'm back to the same two metal buildings that I was before.
So why did you bring us the twenty-two million dollar building? I, I mean, and what I'm hearing now, Alan, is.
Good question.
What I'm hearing now is that we want an administrative building. Quite frankly, the sheriff, who is our, he's safety for the county. He is busting at the seams.
So am I.
He needs a building.
Yes, sir.
For safety.
I understand.
Okay. I think the perfect spot would be right down there on Lane Park Road for him to build that building.
And we welcome him as a neighbor.
Not a neighbor. I don't know if it's gonna have enough room for both y'all. But he's gonna free up seventy-five thousand square feet when he moves.
And I'm not going in that seventy-five thousand square feet, Commissioner.
And I'm not gonna.
That is completely inappropriate, as Commissioner Campion stated. I'm an elected constitutional officer of this county, just like y'all are. And the, the idea of putting my office in the space vacated by the sheriff's office is that dog won't hunt either.
I'll call a question.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, on the motion, which is to terminate the agreement to move forward with the final design on two separate metal buildings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, aye. Moving on to public hearings. We have a card on tab seventeen. I'm gonna call on the county attorney to read the ordinance and title, and then we'll have our public speaker card.
All right, this will be an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Florida, repealing and replacing section fifteen dash seven Lake County Code entitled Maximum Rates for Towing Service and Storage, increasing maximum towing rates, providing for complaint resolution process, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for severability, providing for filing with Department of State, providing for an effective date. If you choose to approve this today, it'll become ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five. And just for background purposes, the complaint resolution process, that is a requirement of statute, which is why we brought this forward. And the towing industry did request that we increase rates since no increases had been approved since twenty eighteen.
All right, we do have a speaker card. We have Garrett Paquette.
Garrett Paquette, one three eight one nine, Old Highway fifty, many old Florida. Owner of Car Store Towing, Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff, and guests. In regards to tab seventeen and the ordinance, I think one of the keys is not necessarily that they increase, but it's actually the dispute process. And that is something that is mandated by House Bill one seventy-nine that has gone through the Senate and passed. And I think that we don't have that dispute process right now in this county. And as a company that has been operating in Lake County for over thirty years and central Florida for fifty-five, the dispute process is a very important thing because it keeps people honest. And it does give the, the constituents the opportunity to have that grievance process against those towers that are not abiding by this ordinance. And I just ask that you please accept this ordinance and approve it.
All right, and you're saying that this ordinance does in fact include the language that.
Yes.
You're concerned about.
It does. We've actually, excuse me, we've actually had two complaints already against towing companies, both of which were unfounded. We're going to continue to monitor those, and we'll let you know if those complaints rise and whether or not that's gonna be an impact on the staff being able to provide that particular service.
If it's possible, if you'd be interested in putting a board together, a community board, you know, maybe a couple towers, some, you know, staff members, commissioners, you know, other, other people to also review these. Because I'm a past president of the Sunshine State Towing Association, a founding member of the PWF and the Sunshine State Towing Association, and it's very important that we continue the level of towing and, and the people that are in this industry and, and keep it, keep it, keep it good and good to the residents of the county, of all counties, not just this county, but of this county. So it's very important. So I think that the, the grievance process is very important.
So during the grievance process, how, how does it actually, how does it actually work? Do we have our own committee or?
We do not. Glenn, can you come up? So right now, code enforcement reviews the complaints, and then they go back and forth with the towing company and the complainants. But I'll let him describe what he's doing.
Good morning, Commissioner Glenn Guzman, Director of Code Enforcement. So we have had a couple.
Please state your name.
Glenn Guzman, Director of Code Enforcement.
You just didn't hear it, he said it.
So we have had a couple of complaints like county attorneys mentioned, and we have processed them. And we're glad to see that they were not violations and the towing industry was acting in good practice. And so, but what it allowed us to do is to realize that, yeah, we do need a more formal process. We're currently working on amending our website to include that process. That will allow people to fill out a form, allow us to track those processes, those grievances, and then that would go before a special magistrate. So we'll bring those complaints to them.
Okay.
So it would still fall into chapter eight.
So you do the initial investigation.
Correct.
And then it would go to a special master to make the ultimate decision.
Should we not obtain compliance, and yeah, it would ultimately go to the special magistrate.
Okay. All right, and then we can just, you know, if we feel like we need to put other folks together for input, but it sounds like we've got a good process in place for getting to the bottom of whether.
I'm hoping if there's any, anything that needs to be discussed in regards to that, because I, you know, I'm kind of the point guy for most people in the towing industry in this county. And I like to tell them that, you know, you need to have a moral compass in all that you do and, and try to make sure that you abide within the rules that are set forth by county commission, law enforcement, what have you. And if there is a problem with a towing company, I'll give you my card. I will rattle their cage, because I don't tolerate that from towers, I just don't.
And I appreciate you giving your contact information to Mr. Guzman, and we'll go from there. And I think that's great, because if you can self-govern, self-regulate, get people in line, so it doesn't hurt the whole industry, more power to you.
We're a pretty tight group as far as towers go throughout the state. And the thing is, is that we try to self-govern ourselves. And typically, in the towing industry, if you give someone a hard enough time, then everybody kind of discusses it, and then you get a hard time. And that's how that works. It's little, little old school, this is how we operate business, so, but that's us.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Glenn. All right, so we have, any other public comment? Do we have someone online? Yes.
Yes, we do have someone online. Barbara Morris, you should be able to unmute and state your name and your comments to the board. Barbara, you should be able to unmute your line.
Maybe she accidentally put her hand up? I think maybe she.
I'm sorry.
Are you there, Barbara?
Difficulty there. I had actually raised my hand during the prior, prior one.
Okay.
That was being heard. And I would ask, public comment was not requested on the prior one. And I'm concerned that there might be one in the future that I want to speak on, and it won't be called for. So if, if, if we could possibly make sure public comment is called for on all of the issues being brought forward, thank you.
Okay, I understand. You want, you want your hand to be up to make sure that if it's something you need to weigh in on, you've got that chance. So we'll, we'll try to be diligent to, to always ask. Any, any other comments? Okay, all right, moving on. So we did have public comment, we had the, the ordinance title read. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that moved, that passes four oh, and Mr. Sabatini had stepped out for bathroom break, I believe. Moving on then to the ordinance entitled Open Burning Regulations.
Okay, this will be an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Florida, repealing and replacing chapter ten point five, Article Three, Lake County Code entitled Open Burning Regulations, revising the requirements for imposition of a burn ban and prohibiting open fires in Lake County during such ban, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for filing with Department of State, and providing for an effective date. If you choose to approve this today, it'll become ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six.
And when we have a burn notice, it goes up on the website, or how do we get that information out to the public?
It does. We do a press release, we do a social media post, it goes on the website. We're also, excuse me, we're also working on providing more information about what would trigger a burn ban per this ordinance, which is the drought level index. And, and that's when it reads over, reaches over five hundred for a period of time, a burn ban would be in, put in place until it dropped back below the five hundred.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Parks.
Question, is it possible for us in certain areas to contact people individually about burns that we know of through the phone, the reverse?
Are you talking about like right now with the smoke from?
Yeah.
So we try to share information if we have it when there is controlled burns currently. They're doing some controlled burns in various areas of the state, which does cause smoke that people are seeing. We try to make sure we get that information out, not to specific areas, but we try to put it out countywide.
What about in areas where, you know, somebody's clearing and they just do a burn, they get the burn permit from forestry? What about note, those kind of notifications?
I don't know that we.
Is David here?
No, he's not here. Okay. I'm not sure if we get those notifications upfront. Typically, what happens is we get a resident complaint about open burning. And then once we investigate, we find that they've been permitted. And then we follow up with the resident to let them know that they are indeed permitted and allowed to do the burning. We don't necessarily get that initial information sent to us that a permit was issued.
Yeah, I know there's a lot that could happen at certain, particularly certain times of year.
Right.
That might be, that might be helpful if we're able to find some way to put those notifications.
We can work with our communications department and fire rescue and see what we can put together. I mean, maybe it's just an educational video that we put out on social media to kind of let, because this is, you know, typical for this time of year that they do a lot of the controlled burning, but. Yeah, exactly. So let us work on it and see if we can put something together.
Like a PSA would be good.
Right.
But I'm thinking too, that you can go on their website and see what permits they've issued, right?
That's correct.
So maybe part of what we're doing is saying, if you, you know, sense that there's a problem, go to this.
Here's the link, go check it out, right.
And you can look up to see whether permits have been issued.
Sure.
In, as well as making people more aware of when there are in fact burn bans. But we, they've been burning up in the Ocala National Forest, and it's been quite, quite smoky. But the key is people knowing that, yes, this is not, now, there was actually a fire too, but.
But the more recent smoke issues that you've been seeing.
That's been.
Is related to the control burning up in the forest.
And I think people are really glad to know that state of Florida is taking forestry management seriously. And in light of everything that's gone on in California, it's like, it's good to know that they're on top of it and they're making this happen.
With the technology we have, is there a way that we could contact the residents directly via? The-
We've got Alert Lake.
Exactly. Like a, you know?
We can look at that and see what the thresholds are. There's pretty stringent guidelines of when you can use that Alert Lake system. Let us look into it because that could be an option.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that this ordinance, I want to make sure that people understand that this ordinance doesn't supersede the state's authority for the National Forces Service to provide burn bans. And it does not restrict backyard charcoal grills.
That's correct. That is very important. Your stakes are safe.
Yeah. Move to approve.
Wait a minute. I didn't call for public comment. Do we have anybody online? Anyone in the audience? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on then to Tab 19.
Okay, this will be an ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Florida, amending Section 2-101, Lake County Code, entitled "Lake County Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee," adjusting the name of the committee, amending Section 2-104, Lake County Code, entitled "Membership," adjusting committee membership, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for filing with Department of State, and providing for an effective date. If you choose to approve this today, it becomes ordinance 2025-7.
So we have, this ordinance is to address the name and the membership, correct?
Correct.
And part of that is to remove the requirement that there be a county commissioner sitting on this board.
Correct. There would be no county commissioner liaison to this board.
So it would be staff liaison and then when staff feels that there are things happening that we specifically need to know about as opposed to what we do already, which is to get information out through our website and different forums as far as events and cultural things going on, we're making that happen through staff. So that's the purpose of this ordinance. All right. If you have any questions?
Public comment?
Thank you. Public comment? Do we have any public comment? Anyone in the audience?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving forward to the last item on our public hearings, this is regarding trespass notices for public property.
This will be an ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Florida, amending Section 2-4, Lake County Code, entitled "Trespass Notices for Public Property," and Section 2-5, Lake County Code, entitled "Control of Access to County-Owned Controlled and Leased Property," clarifying enforcement authority, revising the appeal process, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for filing with Department of State, and providing for an effective date. Choose to approve this to become ordinance 2025-8. These changes were requested by the Tax Collector's Office and the Sheriff's Office.
Okay. All right. Do we have any public comment? We do have someone online?
Yes, Barbara Morris. You should be able to unmute your line and state your name and your comments to the board.
Hello again. Barbara Morris, Mount Plymouth, District 4. I just want to verify, having read this ordinance, that it does not apply to controlled areas like public parks. We have a situation out here in Mount Plymouth where the county has fenced off one of our private public parks and has placed a no trespassing sign on it so that the residents, when you go to the gate entryway, if you enter, you're breaking the law. So I just want to make sure that this ordinance does not impact our public parks and possibly to maybe address that no trespassing sign that is on the park in Mount Plymouth.
So this ordinance allows the county to trespass any individual who violates the requirements of the ordinance off of any property, including public park property. The county, as a landowner, also has the right to close off any and all portions of publicly-owned property as they deem necessary. The parks director would have to discuss why the specific park you're talking about has been fenced off and marked as no trespassing, but the county has the right to do that separate from this ordinance.
Even though it's a private park in our subdivision?
What, Mrs. Morris, what's the name of the park that you're referencing? So we can look into that.
It doesn't have a name. It is a substantially large park that was on 46 before the alterations to 46 was done, and it surrounds the old lake bed. It basically is a forested area that I've walked in and other people have walked in just to enjoy the nature of it. When they did 46, they just threw up a fence along 46 to prevent four-wheelers and threw up a sign for no trespassing so that the residents no longer can use the park.
Okay. I believe the Parks and Trails Director has some information regarding that.
Hi. So Angela Harrell, Director of Parks and Trails, for the record. That is the dry lake bed where we have ATV and four-wheeler issues. We've had many complaints from the surrounding neighbors. Those signs are put up so that we can trespass those individuals. You can walk into that park and use the trails there. That is so that we have backup to trespass individuals that are tearing up the property in there. And we do. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that we can put signage on there that says public access is allowed other than ATVs and all that kind of stuff?
Or foot traffic.
Foot traffic is allowed.
Yeah.
Right.
We have signs that we can put up that say no motorized vehicles, but we also can also alert them that it is available for foot traffic, yes.
And then if you have a motorized vehicle, then you'll be trespassed. If you don't, then you're okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
Just whatever the wording is, just make it super clear and that it is perfectly fine to walk on that property.
Yes.
Barbara, thank you for bringing this up and for staying on this issue. And thank you, Angela, for taking it on and-
We'll get something put up.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other public comment? All right, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move for approval.
All right. We have a first, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving then to Tab 21. This is request approval to appoint a member to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And this is the committee that Commissioner Morris sits on. And the request is for Brian Broadway.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Under discussion, I just want to point out that Brian Broadway is-
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal.
Yes.
And I'm hoping in the future, and if you haven't had an opportunity to visit with him and to see the good work that Find, Feed and Restore is doing in our community, I can't say enough about the amazing work that they're doing to help people who are what often, you know, I guess the phrase that's used is those who are working but they can't afford housing. So his work that he's able to do is help people, you know, have a place, a roof over their head, at least a safe place for their family as they work through his program so that they then can get to a place where they can be in traditional permanent housing. And I don't know what we would do, you know, without him and his organization and the people that support the organization. And I know Maria and her group, they work with him, and they're just doing great work. So he's an excellent member to have on the Affordable Housing Committee. So, all right. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the Mount Plymouth-Sorrento Community Redevelopment Advisory Committee, asking to reappoint Francis Knight, who is here with us today, sitting in the audience. This applicant is a qualified elector of Lake County and resides within the Mount Plymouth-Sorrento planning area. And I am the liaison and I certainly recommend that reappointment. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Francis, for your service. Moving ahead then to reports. County attorney? County manager?
Yes, I just would like to make everyone aware of office closures next Monday, the 17th, and that is in observance of President's Day.
All right. Commissioner Sabatini?
I went to the Florida Greenways and Trails Conference the other day. I was surprised that the county commissioner parks there, I knew it was passionate about those things. So it was good, learned a lot. Obviously, who's our guy that always goes down there? Mike Stevens, all those, yeah, a couple of them. One of our great staffers, Quigley, I think his last name is there. Yeah, I'd like to just, at the next meeting, have a brief discussion of the timeline of what's going to happen with the new funds we have and parks and trails and how much we can spend when that happens. Because, you know, I guess I was told half of the money we're going to bring in from the new amendment is going to go to trails. Or I guess maybe we pass some previous ordinance directing that, something like that. So, I mean, we can do it now. I'm just curious. I don't know enough about the parameters, how that money's supposed to be spent, when it's supposed to be spent, et cetera. I think Melanie told me a little bit about it, but I'd like to have a much firmer knowledge of the whole thing because obviously people in the community are already chirping up, kind of wondering what our approach is going to be, right? Doing everything we can to spend that money to prioritize the good trails in different parts of the county. And then second, well, I guess, any response to that?
I mean, we can talk about more about later, but it can be used for land that could be used for trails. It won't be used for trail construction.
Right. That was a distinction, is you're not building actual trails with it, but the right-of-way or the area needed or the areas needed on the sides of the trails, that kind of thing, that there's opportunity.
Got it.
Like the highway to the park.
To follow up on Commissioner Sabatini, I would like the commission to start looking about completion of something. We've got all of these things that we have, just little pieces going along. I think our next budget year, we should look into, what can we do to get something completed and move on to the next one? Because everything I'm turning, when people call me, it's, you know, you've had to deal with it five years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. We need to get some things completed so we can show progress.
Are you talking about trails?
I'm talking about trails. I'm talking about roads, infrastructure. You know, we need to isolate something that we can do and complete.
And part of the reason, most of the reason, why you do things in increments-
Funding.
All about the money.
Right.
And when you can get the grant money, how much you have to leverage to get the grant money, sometimes it's right-of-way, you can't get the right-of-way, you know? It was always a pet peeve of mine before I was on the county commission was the sidewalks to nowhere. It just drove me crazy. Like, okay, I'm walking on the sidewalk and then all of a sudden, I guess I have to stop because there's no more sidewalk. And it is irritating and aggravating, but then when you're on the money side of it and you realize that sometimes you piece it together so that one day it will be whole. But, you know, I'm all for opportunities to talk more about some of the projects that are ongoing and actually delve into some of the, you know, the gaps and why the gaps are there and how we're trying to fill those gaps and like-
Like the roundabout that Commissioner Smith wants.
Well, yeah, and that roundabout probably would have been started already, I mean, literally already, except for the fact when the bid came back and we had the money for the original bid amount and it was like, I don't know, Fred, three, four million dollars more than what it was supposed to be? So we did have the money for what the original roundabout was going to cost, but then based on new construction costs. So I think they're back to design, looking at, can they redesign it in such a way? Are there any bells and whistles in? Is there anything that can be taken out so that we can bring the cost down? But it's like everything, it all comes down to the money.
I agree with Commissioner Morris. I think it's Fred's fault that we don't have that roundabout yet.
Well, we don't have four-lane on 466A either.
Well, to that point, like I got, it was a comment made at a recent city council meeting, why doesn't the county build all four-lane roads? They know the traffic's going to be bad, let's just do four-lane roads at once. And I'm thinking, okay, because it's a lot of money to build four-lane roads and then to maintain them as well until the traffic comes. I mean, we do a great job of getting the right-of-way because that's the most expensive, one of the most expensive parts about building a road. But, so I understand that it's, why isn't it done now? But it all comes down to the money.
Yeah, and I think honestly, if you have specific projects and you want us to delve more into why is this this way, then I think that's like something that we could take on, you know, as a more specific, okay, this is, I want to know why this is happening this way. Then we can get staff to bring back information and we can go over. And that way, when people ask you, you'll be armed with the information. And again, I do think that half the battle is getting information out. When people know, and they're not just being irritated by the fact that they're assuming the worst, but it's, you know, it's that vacuum and all of it gets filled on places like next door and social media. But if you can actually provide the information, it helps tremendously. I think when people know, okay, this is going to happen in two years, or this hasn't happened yet because, but it's programmed, you know, to happen in the future. So we have like the Wakiva Trail out in the Sorrento area where the, we've got a trailhead at the park, and then we've got the trailhead at Neighborhood Lakes. We've got a piece, we've got part of it built, but the next part, we've got a gap to get to the other trailhead. And staff can tell you, you know, it's like, it's a methodical, you're waiting for DOT to give you a little bit more money for the right-of-way. Now we've got the right-of-way, now we've waited to get a little bit more from them to actually put the asphalt down. And it's, that's how you get, that's how you make it happen and get it done, is the increments. It's just frustrating. And Bobby Bania, he is the king of figuring out how to incrementally make progress and get things done. But Commissioner Sabatini, back to your report.
Oh, and if I could just ask staff one question. So, you know, obviously, is it next spring that we either appoint a board or start making decisions on allocating these funds? Is that next?
For the public lands, so we just put the application on our website, so we're accepting applications. We cannot get the bond until 2026 because that's when the current public lands referendum sunsets. So we have about a year before we even can get the bond. So in the next few months, we're going to be gathering applications. We'll bring it to the board. We'll do some vetting on the staff level. We'll bring it to the board for the appointments to this committee, this resident committee that will then make recommendations about purchases, land purchases to this board for consideration and ultimately approval.
And that committee also will be able to establish a process or criteria for how we're going to rank things, how we're going to buy things that would ultimately be recommended to you for approval.
So it's always going to be advisory board?
It's an advisory board, correct. Final purchasing decisions will be made by the BCC.
Very important board.
Can I comment on that?
The most important board we'll have, I think, in the county. So, okay, good. Get it done. So, and then finally, yeah, as you guys remember from my comments last month, you know, one of my focuses this first year is I want to make sure we're super fine-tuned on doing everything we can as a county in terms of sharing the priority of the president and the governor and combating illegal immigration. And so, as you probably know, over the last 30 days, the governor, the president, and the legislature have all been very involved in conversations about how that looks going forward and what, and one of the major components to what the president, the governor, and the legislature are saying is that the counties and local governments have to play a part at various levels. And so I'm not recommending anything yet, but starting next month or two months from now after session or probably at the end of session of the state legislative session, I think there's going to be some mandates for what we need to do. And I have no doubt that our constitutional officers in our county, especially in this area of Florida, are going to do everything they can to comply with the law. That's not really my focus. to comply with the law. That's not really my focus. My focus is, can we come up with a set of protocols or ideas or procedures that make us the model county in the state for getting information to the appropriate authorities to help their enforcement methods? And so, you know, just wanted to throw that out there, sort of something to keep in your mind as we go through session at the end, see what product we have and what we can do to improve upon it. Because I, I don't believe we're just here to be dragged along for whatever state or federal lawmakers consent to. I think we should actually be trying to become a model for what that looks like. I know that was very abstract, but we'll find out more about what we're supposed to be doing and how we can improve upon it next month. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, and I'd like to reserve comment on that until we find out exactly what you come up with.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, Commissioner Parks.
All right. Yeah, so I have a bit of a lengthy report. I'll start with some of the, some of the events first, and then the report on the Claremont meeting that we had earlier. So, the Historical Society, appreciate being the liaison of the Historical Society. So, I want, they wanted me, and I wanted to announce that on February 22nd, there will be an event that they're holding, Dr. Daniel Sylvester, Florida, an African-American folklore historian, at 2:00 PM at the Lake County Historical Museum. And that is sponsored by them. So, that is an event that's open to everyone at 2:00 PM on February 22nd. Went to the dedication this past week at the, in Groveland of the Oak Tree Union Colored Cemetery of Taylorville. Want to give, I don't know, shout out, congratulations to Groveland Fire Chief Kevin Carroll, the city of Groveland, and of course Pastor Tony McCoy, who was here earlier, doing the invocation for all the efforts that they put into that. They give a shout out to Commissioner Sabatini. So, they, they appreciated your support. They gave you a shout out there for that as well. And, and the commission too. So, I, I thought it was an incredible event. They had the Florida Army National Guard come in and formally dedicate soldier, the burial, resting spot of soldiers that served us, this country in World War I as well. I thought that was very touching and hearing some of the stories as well. So, it's open. You can go out there now. It's amazing. It was totally overgrown. You really couldn't even get through there. But now it's just the beautiful, beautiful place that, I don't know, it's just, you got to go see it. And the community came together to do that and put it all together and make it look so nice. So, also went recently to the Florida Association Counties Innovation Summit. Commissioner Sabatini also went to that. Want to thank our staff that did an incredible video and a short notice. Jennifer, thank you to your staff, LeVar, everybody that addressed AI. That was the hot topic is AI and the use of AI, and how it could change for us in the county. And of course, making sure that whatever we do with AI, that it's trusted and verified first, and that it fits into the mission of what we're trying to do as a county. And that was expressed in this video. Kathleen did a wonderful job, LeVar. Eric, I think, was on the video too. That was played to all the counties, all 67 counties. So, we're sort of a, like it or not, now a leader in addressing AI. And that was Eric and LeVar's sort of preview, preview video, I guess. I know they have some ideas about what we can do for AI, and Jennifer's asked them to do that. So, I'm really excited this year to see how that plays out. Rowing, I want to thank Commissioner Smith. You went to City of Claremont Workshop recently as our chair for TDC. Thank you very much for your comments. A lot of history there. I think you did a great job. I want to give a shout out, of course, to Ryan and our staff, Ryan Ritchie, Jennifer, Kathleen, who's been involved with us a little bit as well, about, I don't know, going back and understanding the history and, you know, the rowing, the boathouse facility came up as an issue in Claremont, and we do have involvement because it, TDT dollars years ago were provided for that facility. And so, there was a, which is okay to look at vision and where we stand with things. I think that's good to do from time to time. Any good business does that. And so, they're taking a look at that. But I think Ryan and Commissioner Smith, you did a great job at that meeting. We're there. The important message is, is that we're still there to the city of Claremont to offer our support, our expertise. You know, Ryan has gone out, Commissioner Smith knows this, to try to recruit events that will benefit us all in Lake County, TDC events, that the county staff helps on a larger level that maybe locally, the city of Claremont can't do by themselves. Good things happen when you ask people for help, is kind of the lesson here. And I think that's what I hope is going to happen. I just, they put the contract on hold with the Lake County Rowing Association. The city, the city did, they're looking at that. Is that, that's correct, Commissioner Smith?
I don't know.
Yeah. So, they put that on hold, and I think that's okay. But I, I think the Rowing Association has done wonderful things for Lake County. They've certainly fulfilled their dichotomous, the dichotomy of what the boathouse does. They've certainly fulfilled their part, and that was the community part. You don't ask the Lake County Rowing and Association and volunteer parents to go out and nationally market the USRA and large events. That's where the county and the city come in and working with regional partners. So, the Rowing Association, in my opinion, has done their part. It's just, I think we need to get back, if we're looking at where we go as a county and the city with, and Claremont with rowing and all paddle sports. By the way, it's, I focusing in on rowing, but it's all paddle sports. Canoe, kayak, even sailing could be a part of that as well. Where we go with that, and we can help, we can help make that, we can help further that vision. So, thank you for that, Commissioner Smith. All right. So, lastly, with the, in regards to the workshop that was held on January 21st, we did make the presentation to the city of Claremont regarding Wellness Way. We did also touch on the end of that meeting on the MSTU as well, the issue that had come up. That was from about 6:30 to 9:30 that evening. So, I do appreciate staff. Meg is here, Kathleen, LeVar, Jennifer, of course, is sitting right by my side. They actually presented most of the presentation. It was very, very informative, and it was very important to go back and give a lot of history to, back to why we're here, where we're at, and with this, with this, the situation with what happened to citrus in the late 1980s, and the moving away, the transition from that industry into trying to not become another bedroom community to Orlando. So, you did a great job. Again, the focus on the historical aspect, from the, what happened in the freezes after the freezes, and I'm trying to summarize this, and we can give you the presentation where we went through all this in detail. But I think what's important to remember is, is that entitlements were provided. And I say this every chance I get, because sometimes it's, oh, what are you doing? Just approving more houses. Well, these were landowners at the time that had entitlements that came along after the freezes. So, the die is sort of already cast when it comes to that. The next question, of course, is what do we do as leaders to try to promote the right kind of growth pattern? We wanted job centers on the map, not the pattern of development, which is making us a bedroom community to Orlando, as I mentioned before. And that was what was happening in South Lake. We wanted something different. We wanted high quality, walkable, so high quality, walkable, conservation-minded neighborhoods, not the same old, same old. And we wanted fiscally sustainable development. I think what's important to point out about Wellness Way, and this will, this will get to a question that was asked during the meeting. It's not like the rest of Lake County. We have, we have come up as a rural county, but recently, in the last 10 years, that has changed. We, like it or not, have very urbanized areas in the county, proximity to Orlando. So, things that we think of and we try to work with and we, policies that are in place, often sometimes we're still in the mindset that Lake County is rural. And there's very large parts of Lake County that are rural. And boy, I'm committed as ever to make sure that we keep them rural, by the way. But what became apparent during the meeting, during public comments, was that there was some uncertainty, again, coming out of, about Wellness Way from the city council members, some, not all. And I think, you know, the, some questions about the planning process and some of what you've already brought up about job centers and, you know, where are the jobs? We heard, I heard one city council member asked why the county was even doing urban planning, sort of implying we shouldn't have planned Wellness Way or it should have been made into another city. That was an idea that had come up as well, that it should just become its own city, primarily because the county doesn't do urban planning. And typically, I agree with you, a county does not do urban planning. And again, going back to that work mindset, we've been a rural county since our founding. But the reality is, is we have to do urban planning. So, you know, I was not able to answer that question. We, we were not able to answer those questions in the public hearing. So, I'm kind of why I'm answering that question now. Why should we do urban planning? And also, the mayor expressed frustration that, you know, where are the jobs? And the job center wasn't happening. And he referenced Ford C. Commerce Park. So, the Wellness Way question about why we're doing planning, why we're doing planning there is because it wasn't being done. Pretty, pretty simple. Nobody in South Lake was doing it, and other cities were doing it. There was a mindset to avoid growth, and I get it. And I wanted it to be that way, too. But it wasn't being done in South Lake, South Lake County period. If we hadn't done it with those entitlements that I referenced, we would be somewhere between 20,000 to 25,000 homes. That would have all been done sort of in piecemeal fashion, 100 acres here, 80 acres over there, kind of flying underneath the radar. Claremont wasn't planning at that time, at that time. We see what happens with the growth patterns in places like Four Corners. And that is why we do Wellness Way. So, that's the answer to that, because we're trying to do something different with that pattern. So, the answer to that was, was pretty obvious to me, why at this point we are doing urban planning, especially when you have Horizons West, which is urbanized Orange County, right on the border. Now, regarding the question about the jobs, because I know that that has come up as well, and specifically, look at the Ford C. Commerce Park. So, I respectfully disagree with that analogy. It isn't a good comparison. Ford C. Commerce Park actually had a slow start. How many years ago was that put in place? Over 20?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, so longer than that. I mean, for a long time, it didn't, wasn't doing anything. There were very hardly anything. I mean, if they'd gotten pretty impatient with it back then, imagine what could have happened. So, you know, 20, 25 years, 30 years or more now. And that area became a success because of, as you know, the infrastructure in 1927 and the turnpike being there. And so, it started out with logistics, warehousing, not a lot of jobs actually with that. So, there wasn't a big housing demand to be located right next to the Ford C. Commerce Park because it's logistics and warehousing and storage and trucks coming in and out at times. So, when we started marketing Ford C. Commerce Park, and the county took the lead on that, that's when Crowe-Groacata came in, working with Crowe-Wentoo, we'll give them credit, and Telus Steel and some of these companies that are high wage employers. So, now that's finally happening after all this period of time. So, those, that'll, that'll come. And Wellness Way, we have a toll road that's under construction now, Wellness Way Boulevard, that's under construction, or we're working on that. And that will be key to the success, that infrastructure that's in place, to encourage the job centers that are on the map as well. So, during the workshop, there was some talk about Wellness Way in its own city. I'm not making its own city. I guess they would go ask legislators to do that. I'm not in favor of that. I don't think that that would be a necessary extra additional layer of government and taxation that would be in place. There was also some conversations about whether to DNX, actually, DNX out of Wellness Way, the city of Claremont. You know, I've enjoyed being, being a partner, and I hope that they will be. And I understand if there's not a stomach for that and some of these tough questions that we're trying to wrestle with today. These are, this is tough, what we're doing. It's not easy. If they don't have the stomach for it and they want to DNX, it's not really going to hurt the county, in my opinion. I don't know if legal and if our staff thinks differently, but it doesn't hurt us. And if that's what they want to do, then I, I guess that's okay and we'll move on. You know, I think there's a governance model that could be set up if that were to happen with the Citizens Advisory Board in a few years. It could be set up to advise, made up of businesses and residents to advise if they DNX completely, have some representation there. So, regarding the MSTU, there was some public comments regarding opposition, or at least some people asking questions or having serious concerns about it. So, some said they were not notified or didn't know of the MSTU. Absolutely still want to be sensitive to this and would want to make sure that we're triple-checked it and triple-sure that everybody was notified or that they had some kind of notification at least. We know that sometimes when you have notification, sometimes you can only do so much, whether, you know, people look at or see at it or sort of pay attention to it. But, but we certainly want to be fair, so I, I get that. I think in some of the neighborhoods and research that I've done, it already turns out that notifications and closing documents were provided on the MSTU. So, I checked that. Wellness, Wellness Ridge was one of those. Now, maybe builders like Lennar, which is that one builder, maybe they should have done a better job at that. I, I understand that. And I think that's where, in the future, potentially, the website will help, whether the builders do it. Builders oftentimes just want to sell the home, so they'll almost tell you anything. But I think the website, sorry, not you, big builders, that they'll, they'll, they'll do that. And so I think that that could help in the future. So, all that being said, and believe it or not, I'm actually, I actually shortened my conversation for you, Commissioner Smith, on Wellness Way, because we'll come back to it with the presentation later. But to the issue about the MSTU, this is what I would propose, hearing the concerns and moving forward, is first of all, change the ordinance, that we've, we've talked about that before. Change the ordinance, the MSTU ordinance, which should be noted that the city of Claremont actually wanted this ordinance, the language in this ordinance. So, I would propose we change it to make it more clear. I know Mr. Fromasi has vowed concerns about making it more clear on the, the use of the money, the use of the funds. So, our attorney has already crafted that language. So, I think we should just go right into asking the city, because it has to start there, as I'm, as I understand.
That's correct, because they've opted in. They need to accept those changes before we can make them on our side.
Right, okay. So, I think we should do that. And, and I'm, I mean, I, to the end, we should do that. We need to change that and make it more clear, no doubt about that. I would also, and Jennifer, this might be where you'd want to put the graphic up, the, I want to propose this. So, the next part of this, and being sensitive to the concerns heard, I would propose we change the payment period. This would provide a relief to the current MSTU rate. So, we wanted to do, I think we approved, which by the way, these are approved in July every year. They're not, it's not something we do now. So, we'd have to make this vote in July during the process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Yeah, so instead of doing the five-year growth, base growth scenario, which is what we voted on, which is the .917 millage rate, I would propose it's the 10-year. So, you'd, you would back that off. There would be relief. It would go to .442 over 10 years. So, you get an immediate relief on that. Now, that will extend the payout period, so there'll be longer, there'll be more use of gas, either gas tax or general fund revenues for that upfront. But that is, I think, a good scenario here, a good compromise that addresses those concerns as well. Again, the use of the MSTU, to be clear, because there's a lot of discussion about this, it, it does not go to resurfaced roads. I don't, I'm not sure why that keeps getting out there. That's the gas tax. We're not making people that, everybody that's using those roads pay for it. This is for long-term maintenance of the lighting and of the landscaping. Again, this is not an urban, we don't normally do this, as the chairman alluded to earlier. Grass swales and beha grass on a rural road or semi-rural or outside of the city is perfectly fine with me. In fact, that's what I would want. This is a different scenario. We're in an urban environment. We're trying to promote jobs. We're trying to promote all the aspects that people had asked us for in better development. We're trying to steer development, by the way, towards this area, instead of further out in Groveland and further out in the green swamp. So, we're, I think we're trying to do everything that people have asked us to do over the last 10 or 12 years. And this is, this is a tool, this is a part of that. Otherwise, to pay for the lighting, to pay for that maintenance, it's, it's not a capital cost thing. Developers pay for the roads, the impact fees and the road funding fee, which I, we'll touch on in the presentation, and Dr. Richard Levy can explain that as well. You should each meet individually, if you have not, with him on that as well. It's very complicated, but it works. That's what funds that capital side. This is maintenance. Otherwise, you don't have that, then you start straying away from what we have always talked about with Wellness Way. It's very similar, very analogous to the villages. Everybody loves the beauty of the villages. The county roads through the villages, as you know, the Sumter County pays that with their gas tax for the resurfacing. But the additional amenities, that's paid through by the, the residents and the businesses of the villages, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, this is no different than that. I think it's fiscal responsibility. At the same time, I understand the concerns, but I, you know, I don't want, we're doing this, we're trying to attract jobs, we're trying to create a better community. I don't want my friends in Umatilla paying for, for something that is, is primarily benefiting, the direct benefit is on these four, three major roads. By the way, it's not all the other roads. It's just the three roads that are defined in the ordinance for Wellness Way. So, that's my proposal. I don't think I've missed anything, Jennifer. You and I have talked about this at length, but we, we would not do this, I don't think we could vote on this now, per se, but I think we, what we would say is, you know, this is an understanding to move forward for July, to, to go this, to go this route. So, I mean, I just want to hear your comments on it.
I'd, I'd like to see like the overall budget and the, on a map, the three roads and the overall budget, and look at the numbers based on buildout, including the commercial buildout. So, I can better understand, like, maybe we have different levels of service that you start out with that increase. that you start out with that increase as you get more contributors. So you give more relief now, and then as more people come onboard, level of service goes up, and you have more people to spread that same number among.
Yeah, and I'd be open to that, too. And I think that's a good question. You know, explaining how this will go, I guess, in theory, goes down, the more development comes.
It does. In all three of the scenarios, it does come down as there's more development. Basically, the 5, 10, and 15-year was how much subsidy and for how long would the other funding sources of the county pay until the other properties were no longer vacant properties and the property values went up. So, but we can certainly, I'm hearing that the board wants us to have another presentation on the Wellness Way and the MSTU. We're happy to do that. So what we can do is, is give you, over the next 15 years, 20 years, it was part of the MSTU calculation process with the consultant, you know, this is where we think the growth is coming and when, and this is how much we think the maintenance is going to be at that point, and so here's where the millage is. And we can go through all of it again. We're happy to do that.
And it has to go down, because this is not in the general fund. You can't just keep the rate the same and collect more and more money on stuff that's not in the budget and go to some other expense. So this will go down. I mean, there's not-
Correct. Well, with the schedule through 2040 is right there. It's just whichever scenario. So the board, you know, originally approved the .917. I mean, as early as this July, we could go down to the .442, the .249. Then that's just based on the current schedule.
So, yeah, to play devil's advocate, as a taxpayer, when have your taxes ever gone down? You know? I mean, it's, that's, when you look at it, you're a taxpayer and you go, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, they say they're going to go down." No, we've got to, like, work these numbers and make sure that this is not a scenario where we say it's going to go down and it doesn't. Or let's just go ahead and set it at the rate that it needs to be, to be sustainable at some point in time when you actually have enough people onboard. It doesn't seem fair to me when you have a small number of people onboard and they're picking up the tab. They're, I mean, they're essentially subsidizing it for everybody else, and then one day, there'll be more people chipping in. It's just, I think we've got to really get in the weeds on this one. And I also think that there's a theory, you know, everybody says, "Well, we shouldn't be in some other place in the county paying for this enhanced service." But if the commercial properties are developed as job creation centers and they're commercial, and this all materializes the way that it was envisioned, and these are the parcels that are used by lead and economic development to bring businesses into Lake County, I could argue that that enhancement of all those commercial users benefits everybody.
Totally.
And you could justify having some locations where you're doing some additional landscaping maintenance, because you're also bringing in a lot more money from those areas, because you've brought businesses to those areas.
So this is the reason, the exact reason why I say it should be a separate presentation. We're at the end of the meeting. People are expecting this conversation to happen. So I think we need to make this, we need to publicize it, so that people in Wellness Way understand that this conversation is going to happen, and then they can have an opportunity to weigh in, not have this discussion. I mean, we talked for 15 or 20 minutes, a lot of good information, a lot of good thoughtful information toward the end of a meeting, when most of the people in Wellness Way don't even know we're having it. So that's the exact reason why I say we needed to have this as a presentation, so everybody is aware of what's going to happen. And I think we need to move forward with that presentation, stop the conversation here, so we can have all that thoughtful conversation as it comes up.
Yeah, and I think that that's great. And I've actually been an advocate for having more meetings on this. I've talked Wellness Way with you all day. But just to be clear, we did have the workshop at Claremont with people to attend it, so it's not like we're not, yeah.
Correct, but all of us were.
I know, I know. So we'll have another one here. Now, as far as the rate goes, I mean, again, we're staying within the budget. So, you know, if we're spending more on than what's allowable in the order, then we are very wrong. You're right. We would be way out of bounds on that. But I think we can talk about that. I mean, obviously, we're going to talk about it more. So I wanted, at some point, I had to present this. That's why I'm doing it now, that this is what I would favor, you know, moving forward like this. I think it's a good compromise. And, you know, there's some things that have to be done to attract businesses, by the way, upfront, and the businesses are coming. I know that social media might be out there and has an opinion that it's all houses and then we're not saving land that are set aside for commercial. We are. We are, and there is commercial that's coming. There's projects that are being presented. And unless some other commission changes the mind, changes their mind and wants to build all homes, I mean, that could happen, but I wouldn't do that. So I, and all these pieces go together to try to make that a reality. So there's, it's not easy to talk about, nobody like, I wish we didn't have to do this. I wish there were no taxes, but-
What's our current rate? What's the current rate again?
.917.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we made some progress here. So do we want to schedule this for, like, a more detailed conversation next month?
Yeah, I think that's what we're going to do, right?
You want to do it at the board, at the board meeting, or do you want to do it as a workshop meeting?
I mean, I like the workshops.
Here?
Yeah. I mean, I like a workshop, but it could be wherever, yeah.
Can we do it, like, post-meeting or before the meeting?
I'm good after the meeting, yeah.
Okay. Because if we chose the same day, that way, you know, we know we don't have-
We've done that before. We've had workshops after, yeah. We could do that.
Let's make it down the road where we can notice everybody.
And then do we have the legal authority currently to adjust the rate, or do we have to wait until July?
July. It's set for the tax year already.
Okay, so now you have some notice, too.
Yeah, and just think through, you know, the concerns we had. People were working, couldn't log into the meeting, that kind of thing. If the meeting is, I mean, they can go online and watch it again, and then they're not flipping through. We can, like, keep it separate, so it's really easy to get to. People can just watch that part of the meeting. I think that would help a lot.
I've got a good idea. Why don't we give the video to all the home builders down there, that they can give to their potential buyers?
Well, that would be a great idea. And we used to have good meetings with all the builders. The city cut those off, which I think where we would talk about those kinds of issues. But we'll, that's another topic, but yeah.
And I do want to look closer at, like, the one Ridge View. I want to understand more about what notice people had, and if there's any other way that the county can back that up in the future on other, on new projects, to assure notices are effectively getting to buyers.
So, Madam Chairman, I pulled the Ridge View PUD. There's no requirement in there that they notify future buyers of a Wellness Way MSTU. The only requirement of any notification in that PUD is that they have buyers sign an acknowledgement that they are buying property next to an active sand mine. But at that time, nothing was contemplated about the Wellness Way MSTU. I'll also tell you that I don't believe that that language is in any other of our PUDs in that jurisdiction. What we started doing, I think, two or three years ago, is putting language in those PUDs, notifying potential buyers that they would be subject potentially to a internal subdivision road MSTU for maintenance, but nothing on the Wellness Way bigger standard. I have already suggested to the planning department that we look at putting that in, all future ordinances in Wellness Way. But keep in mind, too, that we adopted that ordinance to establish the Wellness Way MSTU in 2022. It would show, and it did show, on all of the tax bills for that area in '23 as a zero millage. So future buyers or potential buyers that were doing their homework and looking at their tax bill should have seen the line item and should have seen that it was zero millage. And at that point, they could have questioned, "What is this? Why, what's the charge going to be? Is there going to be a future charge?" So it's been on the tax bills for all of those properties since '23.
Would there be any buyers that came before that, though?
Absolutely. So the Wellness Way MSTU ordinance that you adopted in 2022 was advertised in accordance with law. It was a display ad in the Daily Commercial, which is a countywide newspaper. There was, the hearing was held in December, I believe, of '22 as a public hearing. So it was advertised in accordance with law. Now, individual notices were not sent to every single property owner down there, because we typically do not do that with any of our ordinances, whether or not they have financial impacts or otherwise. We just advertise in the newspaper.
So, for any existing, I mean, we have PUDs that are undeveloped, correct? Do we have any approved PUDs down there that are undeveloped?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Kathleen. I'm assuming there are PUDs that are approved that are not built out yet.
I'm just wondering, though, whether you can administratively not notice a zoning meeting, you have a zoning meeting, you make an amendment to those PUDs and you add that language. And if the people, you know, if the developer that's involved doesn't want it, I mean, why wouldn't they want it? Why wouldn't they want that?
I mean, you can do that. If you want to bring back a county-initiated rezoning for every single PUD that's down there, you do have to individually notice every property owner in that PUD. You have to bring it to the planning board and to the county commission. Another option that I can explore with the staff is whether or not the county has the ability to record a notice that would attach to all of those legal descriptions that would get picked up in a, you know, a title search. Now, do people really read everything that they're given at a closing? Probably not. Should they? Yes. But that would be another option that we could look at, is just going ahead and recording some type of blanket notice that would get picked up in those title searches.
Yeah, like at Wellness Ridge, they had, there was a notice on their closing statements.
And some of the builders may have done that voluntarily. I'd have to go back and look at that specific ordinance, but I just know from generally dealing with all of the ordinances and reviewing them over the last couple of years, I don't recall any specific ordinance that said they had to notice about the Wellness Way MSTU.
Okay. Well, let's get some closing statements from Wellness Ridge.
If you have residents that will give those to us, then we can certainly look at them, but it's not something that's public record that I would be able to access.
Right, right.
Mr. Formasi has one thing.
Yeah, I'll bring mine.
I know, I've seen yours, from Wellness Ridge. I'm talking about Ridge View. I've seen your three properties. I've seen yours.
Okay, no, can't-
Yeah, I mean, the notice.
It's not getting recorded, can't get picked up, so we can't do that.
I know, I know. But we can, I think the question is with Ridge View is the big question. I agree with that. That, I don't know, but-
Okay, we're going to work on scheduling when we're going to be able to do this. And as part of that, let's have, hopefully, some discussion on things that we might be able to do to make sure that as, if this stays intact, as more people come onboard, that we know for a fact that there's something recorded in the public records that if they're doing any amount of due diligence, they're going to find.
We'll do that. We'll include that as the presentation. We'll get that scheduled, hopefully, within the next month, if calendars work out. If not, the very next month.
Okay. And just to clarify, that workshop is going to be here in the chambers, correct?
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. Thank you. Any more, Commissioner Ross?
No, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Am I doing my-
No.
Okay. So, speaking, when we have this workshop, I'd like to have the current head count that's in the MSTU boundary, and then the, what it could be in the MSTU boundary. All right, so I, Astra Library Grand Opening.
That's great.
It was absolutely phenomenal. If you haven't been to the Astra Library, I would implore you to actually take a trip out to Astra and see the library. It's absolutely fantastic. And I know you're probably going to talk a little bit more about that. I had a meeting with a company called Parkview. That's going to be coming up later. I will not make a long discussion on that today. I spoke at the Legacy Club in Leesburg about what's going on in Lake County. I had the Claremont Boat Workshop Boathouse. I just wanted to say that, yes, the TDC is working on some opportunities to get the USRA here for nationals and regional events. However, I noticed that the, some of the people on the Claremont Commission are thinking about the return on investment via money. Well, the boathouse was built, there's more, there's more to return on investment, in my mind, when you have an organization, a nonprofit organization like the boathouse has, to where they invest in the community and they invest in the small, in the kids, and they teach them teamwork, and they teach them responsibility. They've sent several kids off to college. So there's more to, in my mind, there's more to return on investment just in monetary views. There's also the social aspect. And I think that the boathouse is doing a great job on that. Whatever Claremont and the boathouse come up with, it's not our deal. I'm just saying that the TDC is going to continue to look at ways to get the USRA here in Lake County, because that's a great economic driver for Lake County, and that's what the TDC is about. And I think Ryan's doing a fantastic job at that endeavor. So that's it with that. I was also at the innovation, the Sunshine Sports Innovation Think Tank that Ryan was part of bringing down here to Claremont to discuss economic development opportunities. I went to the UCF Incubator Program in Eustace Community Building with Commissioner Morris. Fantastic. It was a great program. Thank you for being there, by the way. I met with the Lake County Museum of Arts. That's going to come up later. I'm going to have another presentation on that, so I won't discuss that here at the end of this meeting. But that'll be another presentation that I'm going to be requesting to come up. And as of right now, that's it.
Okay. I also want to reiterate how pleased I was with the opening of the Astra Library and appreciate everybody that was able to be there. A big thank you to Library Services and George and his team, also Communications for doing an excellent job. And Parks and Trails, as always, came through with the nice upgrades to the surrounding park area and being able to stage, having things opened for people in the area that wanted to still use the park while all that construction was still going on. And the fact that we actually got another basketball court, that was really cool, too. So, love the dog park, just everything about it. It's just perfect. And I know the community was getting anxious to get their programs back online, and now they are back online, and so that's great. So that was a real, just an excellent event. And the fact that, you know, I think back to the meeting when we were talking about even doing this and being able to do it, and then Maria and her group tapping into funds that could also make this a reality. So it was really a team effort, and I think the community is proud of it, and they appreciate the attention, you know, the focus on their area. Along those lines of Astra, I want to bring up that there will be the last meeting, I believe. It's going to be the last public meeting. The Fish and Wildlife, Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission is holding on February 20th at the Astra Community Center. This is the last opportunity to discuss in that forum, the closure of the Silver Glen Springs area for boat mooring. I'm looking at Justin saying, let me know if I say something wrong here, but I think I've got it correct at this point. So, you know, they're looking at restricting any mooring in the Springs area, Silver Glen. And a lot of people are upset about that. A lot of people feel that it's not fair to disallow the public to do that. On the other hand, there's the other argument that the moorings are, and anchoring are harming the environment, harming the springs. People are going in there and they basically will camp- People are going in there and they, they basically will camp for night after night, weeks. So that, therein lies the issue, in addition to disturbing the, the under, you know, water aspects. And so you've got that part of it, you've got the overnight camping, and then you've got the old, old structures, the old vehicles that just stay. And I don't know if you've seen this in other parts of Florida, in bays and harbors and so forth, you know, where people, it's, it's almost like, oh, they just leave it there, yeah. And they might not have good facilities, they may not have good measures intact to make sure that they're not polluting the water in the springs. So it, it's a legitimate issue to be looking at. How can we do this in a way where we are being fair and allowing people to enjoy the natural resources of our state while not destroying what, you know, we are supposed to be stewards of? So to that end, Marion County and Volusia County are taking an active role in expressing their displeasure that this could be closed and offering up ideas on how we could do this in such a way as we still protect the springs. Ideas are that you actually have some permanent mooring structures. So like you see, like in the Keys, you go out to the reef and you tie your boat up to it and then you're not anchoring and tearing up underneath the water. So that's one idea and that's what the other two counties have promoted as well as requiring inspections and assuring that the structures that are going in there actually have, they're up to what code requires. The vehicles are of an age, they actually, you know, they're not, they're not polluting the water. So that's one, that's another idea. Another idea that I've heard is actually having a permit if you're going to stay overnight so that you actually have a limitation on who's there and how long they're there, just like you would in a campground. So we've got some suggestions, I think at the next meeting. I'm bringing back a proposed letter that we would write and possibly a resolution we would adopt. And it would be in conjunction with Marion and Volusia so that we're all on the same page asking for the same thing. This will ultimately be decided by the state. But I just wanted to get any feedback from you all and how, how you feel. Do you think that these are reasonable type things that could be done so that we can still have the springs open, but that we're protecting them at the same time?
Yeah, I, I would say that, first of all, no one mores inside the springhead itself. The springhead is roped off and it's mooring outside the spring. I'm okay with, with the, with the permit, because you have to have a permit to go to like Alexander Springs. So I, I'm okay with that, but I certainly would hate to see it shut down to all boat traffic. It's a beautiful place.
I'm an avid boater and I go up there quite a bit. And it, it does need to be managed. I, I think the idea of having the, the structures there that you could tie up to would be the best. We do it in the Keys. You might have three boats on one mooring, but, you know, and it's going to hold the traffic down a little bit. The overnighters have always been an issue there and that needs to be addressed. And I, I don't know if the permit would do it or not, but it, it needs to be addressed, so I agree.
Okay, well, my plan is to bring back to the board some specifics based on what Volusia and Marion are asking for. And then we'll work together with them and see if we can get Fish and Wildlife to hear us out on this. And I'll plan to go to that meeting on the 20th. I think Justin's going to go with me. And, and I was going to ask Trustee Hendrick as well to go. And we were going to also go up there and take a look at things so we can have seen everything firsthand. And, and then the next thing I wanted to bring up is, we had someone today comment on the, remember when I threw out the idea of exploring the charter idea? If we could just limit it to the idea of, of growth management and annexation management so that county and the city are working together? I'm reading Commissioner Smith's body language right now. But this is what residents are asking for. Everybody, I mean, I'm getting requests from people I would never thought in a million years would be saying, what are we going to do about the growth? This is getting out of control. Can we put a pause on it while infrastructure has a chance to catch up? And we all know the idea of infrastructure catching up. I mean, it's a double-edged sword. We use impact fee money to leverage dollars to be able to do projects. That's one side of it. Second side is the legal side of it. You can only put a pause for so long unless you're actually looking for a way, a plan, and you're pursuing a solution. I think six months is the rule in Florida. And you go past that, you have to show that you're actually working on something specific that's going to address what your issue is. Otherwise, you're going to be in a Burt Harris suit and you're going to potentially be shutting down opportunities for good, positive economic activity in your county. So this gets very, very tricky and yet these are people that I'm hearing from that I never thought in a million years would be saying, what can we do to get a handle on, on growth management? And often it comes back to, I point out that most of the growth is annexations. Most of the growth is cities growing. Can, is there a possibility for, for cities to look at annexations differently? And is that opportunity a county-city relationship where we're actually looking at the infrastructure before new properties are annexed to make sure that we have a way to get the infrastructure in place or coming online? So I, I don't know what the process is. I know it's like 18 months by law that you have to study the charter question. So what would we do next to set up the Charter Commission and give them, could we give them the parameters of what we're, what we're asking them to do? Or is it just open-ended if you appoint a commission to look at charter?
Right, so the last time you brought this issue up, what we had contemplated doing was setting a workshop and bringing in some folks that could talk to you about charter counties and what you could and couldn't do. And I believe we are still working on scheduling that. So I think you need to have a bigger, broader discussion on it with the folks that either have charter counties or have helped to set them up so that they can give you those insights.
Okay, all right, does that sound all right? So we'll move towards a workshop and we'll move towards a date. It's just that it takes 18 months if we were to go in that direction to even get to a point where you'd have something on the ballot for residents to vote on. In the meantime, I don't know what else to do other than to ask our friends at the cities to consider the fact that they don't have to annex property just because they receive an annexation application. It's not a requirement, it's a legislative action and they don't have to say yes to every single annexation application they get.
So I, I find it interesting that I just received this yesterday as a projection of the growth in Lake County for 2030, for 2030. The low is 423,500 and the high is 533,000 people here in Lake County in five years. And right now, we're sitting at 414.
Yeah, that's a lot more.
My concern is that we're going to have 14 municipalities that aren't going to be happy. So I want to make sure that if we're going to have this discussion, that they are included in it.
Oh, absolutely, the cities have to be part of the discussion. But the reality is the cities are people. And you're talking about city officials, yes, absolutely. The city officials need to be involved in the discussion. But it is the people of Lake County and the residents of Lake County that I really feel like we need to be taking into consideration the sentiments that people have, that it's either that we're not against growth, but we need infrastructure to catch up. How, how do we make that happen? I don't, I don't know the answers to these questions, I'm just putting it out there, that I hear from a lot of people, I'm, I understand, we have property rights issues at play. You know, reality is when you have growth, you usually have economic activity and that's positive and you're trying to bring high-wage jobs in. But if it's all rooftops, rooftops everywhere, and people feel like that's not what I want Lake County to be, we've got to have some delineation between the rural areas and the urbanized areas and the infrastructure needs to catch up. How do we make that happen? And, and I don't know if you all are not hearing that, but I'm hearing it over and over again. What people that live in our cities and people that live in the unincorporated area are feeling is that it is happening way too fast and we're not able to keep up with the infrastructure needs.
And, and just, just so you know, you may already know this, is we have these transition areas, right, we go from one to one, to one to five, to one to 10. Well, as soon as the city annexes in, they can blow that out and not even pay attention to it. And that's the problem I've got. So they don't, they don't recognize the transitional areas into the rural zones. I'm all for property rights, I'm all for building, but I'm do it, all for also doing it the right way. And, and I think that's one of the reasons why we have a legislative priority right now, that if a city comes along and takes up both sides of the right-of-way of a county road, they need to take over the road. And they need to quit blaming it on the county. I mean, there are ones getting, there are ones getting the funding to fix the roads, but then they're blaming the county, oh, it's the county road. Well, no, you own all the land on both sides, so.
Commissioner Smith, but I also worry about the county resident that lives at the end of that road.
Right, and they can't hit on the voice.
There still has to be a level of service that the city, if the city then takes over that road, that they have to maintain. I mean, if we can even get so far as they have a responsibility and we get legislative help that way. But we, you know, we can't have them take over and then they just say, eh, well.
Well, I've got, I've got county roads in my district that is nothing but city residences all over. There's no county residents on the county road. So it should be a city road, that's what I'm talking about.
Or you get a piece of the millage, you know? If it doesn't go to the city responsibility, a piece of the millage from those, those cities would come in to help fund those, those county roads. We tried a couple of years ago and we went to our legislative delegation. We had, we had legislation drafted. Our legislative delegation was working on it. And Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Morris may remember from the private sector side. We were asking for a special act by our legislative delegation that would say rural protection areas, if they're annexed by a city, they can only be upzoned if there's an inter-local agreement with the county. Otherwise, the city has to adhere to those lower density requirements. And it was moving ahead, everybody seemed to like it. And then boom, it was just killed and didn't happen. And I know, I know the private sector got involved and, you know, put their two cents in that it was too restrictive. But we had the inter-local agreement part in there so that if there was a time when you needed to make that change, at least we would be doing it together. So we could resurrect that and ask our legislative delegation if they would consider taking that back up as a special act so at least our rural protection areas and our rural transition areas. I mean, I would throw in the rural transition areas being upheld. That would be like your Throilh Hill area, you've got some rural transition there and then you have rural protection. And if Eustace keeps annexing in that direction, all of that is going to be high-density.
Can I add to the conversation here? Yeah, I would welcome any conversation about what we can do better for growth management in the county. Been embroiled in it for 10 years, especially in South Lake County. I think, pay attention to the, obviously, the joint planning agreements with teeth and strength to that. More strength in their, in a governance model, I guess is a better way to say that, would work in this case, so getting JPAs with all the cities. Especially having them agree to adhere to the countywide conservation strategy, which to a question Commissioner Sabatini had earlier, the countywide conservation strategy should be the steering document, the guiding document for the land acquisition. But among other things, it does other things as well, like, you know, could be, could be TDRs, it could be better development, agreeing between the city and the county to do a higher standard of development. Also, how do you address and stay out of rural areas? And if you do, then maybe you mitigate the impact to developing within a rural area somehow. Fully mitigate it, not just from a road standpoint, but from a conservation standpoint as well. Starting to look into the, the value of that as well.
It's so complicated. And whenever you have these JPA meetings, it's like, they have no teeth at the end of the day unless a city is willing to sign a JPA that says, I will adhere to the county's land use designation and densities.
Or I will not annex into these areas. That's the part of the geographic part of it as well.
And have we ever accomplished that?
Well, we haven't yet, but we're hoping to. That's, that's one of the only ways it's going to work.
I'm disheartened and disillusioned at this point. I feel like all of that sounds great, but in reality, it just is impossible. The only way to get it done is either the residents of Lake County say, this is how we want it to be and we get that momentum going, or we get the legislative delegation to say, we're willing to do a special act that says, we're going to honor the county densities in the unincorporated areas. And the only way to deviate would be a county-city intergovernmental agreement so that all of these things that we, you know, are talking about, you actually put it in agreement and you deal with it there.
And it could be one of those is the way, what has to be done, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we beat that one pretty good. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, it was added to the agenda and this has to do with the Mid-Florida Materials landfill that is owned by Hubbard Construction, or Hubbard, I think is the way the company is actually referred to. We went out.
Before you go into that, I have one more thing about the annexation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'll be quick.
No, go as long as you want, this is important.
Just that, you know, obviously, that's the, the stronger legal approach is, you know, do we look at a charter, do we look at, you know, a local bill, a legislative bill, et cetera, et cetera? And, and those are, you know, stronger legalistic approaches. One thing I think that would make sense, and I think would be pretty high firepower for very little push, like the effect would be very strong and it wouldn't take that much, is, you know, we get these emails that say, hey, annexation notification, annexation notification, this city, Lady Lake, Eustace, these cities are getting ready to annex. And we see those, but then that's sort of, you know, it's like, we see it and I guess in our individual capacity, we could reach out and be like, hey, we, we think that's a bad one or maybe that's a good annexation for some reason. I almost think that we should just make it a, like a practice where if we see those, they're automatically put on the agenda for a brief discussion. Pen a letter, send the letter to both the city and also residents and say, you know, we as the county commission think, you know, this annexation's okay or this is bad. Or just understand that, because they're going to get the legal, the legal technical instructions of what this annexation means, we could put it in a much more verbose manner and just pen a letter, send it both through the constituents of that area or the city as a whole. It's really not that expensive, I've done a lot of, a lot of mail, you know, political mail. But yeah, this is quasi, you know, pretty similar. It says, hey, this is happening, you know, we're the county, we don't have the legal authority to weigh in on this, but you know, we believe this. And you know, this is good or this is bad or whatever. And I don't think it's, takes a lot of time. I think it's just you take that email that we get that says, here's the notifications, you kind of put it on the agenda, then we look and look and look and then just very briefly, or you know, land development team can be like, yeah, this is going to, you know, quintuple the amount of density.
Yeah, like you look, okay, so you see where it's at. If it's infill and it's no higher density than the density we have, then that's like the no-brainer. That's like infill's good, same density, it's not. But if it increases the density or there are infrastructure issues, those could be highlighted as our concerns. And then do we have enough time, though, from the time that we get those notices to actually get that here? And I know that staff is stretched thin. We would really need somebody that is able to look at each one of these, compare it to our comp plan, compare it to our LDRs, look at the roads, talk to public works and get that information back to us. Which is really what needs to be happening, but it is a, it's a lot of, that's a lot of, like, labor.
Yeah, no, I definitely don't want to like, you know, suck up all the time, staff's time with that. But I almost think that if it's just at least listed, you know, that same email's put on as a discussion and we take a look and, you know, maybe we don't send a letter in every case, but just some of them are a bit egregious. They end up in the newspaper anyways, but I feel like, you know, we could, our, I think our weighing in on it would rise the sort of public sentiment to a very quick degree. And, and even with some of the officials, let's be honest, some of the city commissioners on there, you know, staff said, hey, we're going to push this annexation. I'm going to be completely blunt, a lot of times the people on the city commission don't even know what's going on. I've seen it in real time. They're just like, okay, I know there's like annexation. They don't understand the density rules, they don't have, you know, in-depth conversations with the staff. So they're just like voting for, maybe if they saw this outside voice from the county that's like, you know, I don't think this is good for the county as a whole, they would think differently about it, just, just an idea.
I think you're on to something. I think it is worthy of the time, it's just, you're going to need a staff person that is spending the time necessary to give us that information. So, because otherwise, I mean, we get these. mean, we get these things, and we're getting bombarded with stuff all the time, to take the time for us to actually look at it and come to a conclusion, that would require us to pick up the phone, get ahold of someone at Public Works, tell me what the road situation is there, are there issues? Get on the phone, talk to, you know, Mike or somebody in Planning and Zoning, "Can you help me decipher what this..." Or, you know, Melanie's got her plate full, and, you know, we're asking her, "Can you take a look and tell us whether this is consistent with our comp plan?" And this is, it's a big undertaking. Have one staff person that's doing this, giving us that information, and then I like the idea of outreach. I mean, I like the idea of a letter to the city if we think it's a bad one, and I do like the idea of letting residents in that surrounding area know, "The county commission sent this letter to the city of whatever, expressing our concerns." I think that stuff...
I bring it up because I think in some ways, it's a softer and more, just a less aggressive approach than going immediately to the more strict legal route, which of course is either a charter counting, huge lift, and then, of course, a legislative local bill, which seems like a local bill, but as you indicated earlier, immediately implicates a bunch of other special interests, and then all of a sudden, quietly...
They were local special interests, though.
So, if I'm not mistaken, didn't we just have a situation where the water authority said, "Don't build this development"? The county said, "Don't build this development." Claremont built the development, the development flooded, we got blamed?
Wait, are we, we're talking about the one that was done in the '70s? No.
Yeah, that's Emerald Lakes.
Yeah, that was the night.
I mean, you had the water authority, and the county say, "Don't build it." Claremont built it, it flooded, and then we, the county commission, got blamed for it. Makes sense.
Of course, yeah, our warnings were historic, they were, you know, pretty early on. Yeah, no, it's still, it's still...
But it was a different mindset at that point in time, in that point of history, if you think about, that was like the '70s or so, when that was first done. People are way more engaged in looking at growth issues much closer, and I think, yeah, I mean, where you could run concurrently, the, we'll have the workshop on the charter thing. I mean, I know, it is, at least it elevates all of this to the point of, we're at critical mass, you know, based on those projections, it's only going to get worse. Is there a way to do this better? I think we could sort of do both, you know, be looking at that charter side of it, because that is the hammer. I just don't want it to be, you know, the genie gets out of the bottle, and then it actually does more harm to Lake County, because it turns us, you know, into a higher taxation county and all that, and we don't want that. So, we really have to, we have to really be careful with that.
That's all I had. Thank you.
But I think you're, I think that's, might be the best approach right now, as far as getting the residents more involved in giving input to the cities, and then having the county weigh in, and then we've done what we can do based on the law as it is now.
Yeah, and it certainly would indicate that staff needs to do like a seven-page bill analysis on every one of these annexations. Here's every legal implication, just sort of like, hey, this is likely, this is likely going to increase, you know, density to a certain amount. That's it. Just sort of a very quick, and then we can do our own homework individually.
So, what I can do, I'll work with Jennifer and the planning staff to see if we can add a new tab that would be annexation notification or something like that. We do typically have a pretty short turnaround. I think we get those notices 10, maybe 15 days before the hearings. Sometimes we can get staff reports from the cities with more information, sometimes we can't, but we will see what we can pull together. A lot of times, Public Works has already sort of been involved with the city and the project, so we would have some information from them, but we will look at doing that. You want to shoot for March, end of March, beginning of April?
April.
We'll shoot for April to start having that on your agenda, and by then, we'll be able to kind of pull together maybe a standard staff report, one, two-page staff report.
Yeah, just, I think, high-level, the densities being proposed versus the density that is in the county, and then any obvious Public Works issues.
Yeah, and if the city refuses to give us any information, just put that in there, "The city refuses to give us information."
Okay, good. All right, so back to Mid-Florida Materials, so...
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before we do that, just a reminder, we had a closed session scheduled for 11 o'clock.
Okay.
We do have the court reporter here. Do you want to finish your discussion and then wrap up with the closed session, or do you want to stop and switch over to the closed session?
Because we can go back into session after...
You can go, we have to go back into session anyways, so...
Right, yeah, because I do, I need to tell you about this, because there is an ask involved, and it's hitting a really important stage of this whole thing.
Can I make one suggestion next meeting? Can I go first? Can we go 5, 4, 3, 2, 1?
He hasn't gone yet.
You're going to go, you're going to be going...
Next.
Next.
I'm good.
So, if the board's okay with that, we do need about a five-minute break to allow the court reporter to set up. We'll come back in session. I have my little standard blurb I need to read on the record. Then we will shut everything down, close off the chambers, have the closed session, and then come back, and you can finish the meeting.
Okay. And we're going to, if you don't mind, Nikki or whoever's doing it, let's just make the order of reports start at...
Down here by me.
Uh-huh, so that it has nothing to do with the number of our district, but it actually goes this way till we end here, and then...
They go back the other way.
And then we go back to Commissioner Smith for our closing day, yes, okay. All right, so we have a game plan. We're going to close for five, we're going to, we're going to take recess for five minutes, then we'll clear out, we're going to then have...
Well, we'll come back in session.
We'll come back in session, and then we'll do our closed session, then we'll reconvene.
Just, so for members of the public that are here, we will come back into session briefly, but the closed session, we will shut off all recording equipment, and everybody will have to leave the room for that. That will probably take 30 minutes to an hour, depending on the discussion, and then the board meeting will resume after that.
Yes, and just to be clear, the closed session is a specific litigation matter, and we're not allowed to speak about anything at that closed session, except for that specific litigation matter, just in case someone is listening to our meeting right now and thinks we're going to, and they think that we're going to close the meeting, and we're going to talk about whatever we want. We can only talk about the one thing that is on our closed session.
And that particular litigation matter involves the PACE funding.
Right, okay. All right, we'll take a five-minute break.
All right. Recording stopped.